I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of December 4th, 2024. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, are available online or at the Planning Department, Room 213. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cell phones may not be used in the chamber during any portion of today's meeting, and we appreciate your cooperation. Please note, Planning Commission action today is final on the following items. 1.3 Special Permit 17043B, 4.1 Special Permit 24009, 4.2 Special Permit 24035, and 4.3 Special Permit 24036. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or to the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or to the County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held November 20th, 2024.
So move, Campbell.
Second, Joy.
Ball.
Upstanding.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Fite.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Ryman Yost.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
We will now proceed with today's agenda. The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called all at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Shelley to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Item 1.1A, Annexation 24010 to annex approximately 45 acres on property generally located west of 98th Street and a half mile north of Van Dorn Street, associated with item 1.1B, Change of Zone 17030F from AG Agricultural District to R3 Residential Plan Unit Development and from R3 Residential PUD and AG Agricultural to Public for the Wandering Creek PUD with associated waivers on property also located west of 98th Street and a half mile north of Van Dorn Street. Item 1.2, Change of Zone 07060E to amend the existing Wilderness Heights Plan Unit Development to add approximately .5 acres to allow 88 additional single-family residential lots and modify the drainage with an associated waiver to the maximum allowed block length on property generally located at South 42nd Street and Wilderness Hills Boulevard. Item 1.3, County Special Permit 17043B for the Borman Borrow Pit to allow continued soil mining and excavation on property generally located at 11351 West Van Dorn Street, and this is final action. Item 1.5, Use Permit 1268H to amend the existing Wilderness Woods Office Park Use Permit to allow freestanding science to be located on any lot or outlet within the boundary of the use permit on property located at 8700 Executive Woods Drive. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on these items?
No.
Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting these sites to be disclosed?
No.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on these consent agenda items? Please stand and state that item.
Okay, it doesn't look like we have anyone here that would like to speak on the consent agenda, so we would now entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, Joy.
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Fite.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Ryman Yost.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
We will now proceed to public hearings. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to that testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission and/or included as part of the record, please provide them to the clerk. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The clerk will use the light system to help aid your timing for your testimony. The lights appear on the monitors that are provided. The clerk will indicate when you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. The red light indicates that your five minutes has expired, and once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or to continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
I will note that Commissioner Ebert has declared a conflict of interest on public hearing item 4.3, which is Special Permit 24036, and will accuse herself prior to that hearing and action of that item. First item on public hearing is item 4.1, Special Permit 24009 for the Landscape Supply Specialist Garden Center on property generally located on the east side of North 56th Street between Bluff Road and Waverly Road, and this is final action. I will note a staff memo was sent to Planning Commission members identifying minor updates to the staff report for Special Permit 24009. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No.
Good afternoon. George Wesselhoff, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. This application is a request for a special permit for a new garden center. It's in the Lincoln Three Mile jurisdiction, generally located on the east side of North 56th Street, Highway 77, between Bluff Road and Waverly Road to the north. The property is zoned AG Agriculture. Garden centers are maybe allowed by special permit in the AG and other zoning districts, including AGR R2 and R3. Their site plan includes a proposed office retail building that would be in the northwest part of the site. They would have trees, mulch, other landscape materials, kind of on the west side of the property. The east side of the property would still remain in agricultural use. This property is 18.72 acres. There are criteria for garden centers in the AG district, and it includes, among other things, setbacks. There is a setback requirement for buildings and parkings at least 100 feet from all exterior lot lines, except for the front yard setback shall be 50 feet, which this meets that requirement. They would have to meet the AG height limitation requirement, which is 35 feet. There is also a requirement that they have access on an existing or future arterial street. This street is a principal arterial, and we did some further review on the question of access. The project was routed to NDOT, the Nebraska Department of Transportation. They didn't have comments in their review, kind of globally as far as the project, but the property owner to the north indicated that he had a conversation with one of the permit staff with NDOT, so we followed up with that person, Sierra Catlin, District Highway Permit Officer, and asked some questions about that driveway access. It's an existing shared driveway with the residential property owner to the north and this property. Historically, as noted in the application history, between the 2008 and 2013 timeframe roughly, there was actually a special permit on this property before for soil excavation. So there was a driveway before that served this property, but when we discussed the question of the driveway with this NDOT staff person, it was indicated that they would have to meet certain design criteria as far as the width. The applicant, who previously also discussed this project with NDOT, was notified that they would have to give additional information that may necessitate a turn lane, but that would be done through NDOT. The jurisdiction for the area from the highway, the physical highway to the property line, is NDOT's jurisdiction, so they have control over that driveway. Did not indicate a fatal flaw or issue with having a shared residential, non-residential driveway. It's more of a matter of meeting their specifications. The, there is a question as far as could they have another access? That question is no, because Highway 77 is a controlled access. So I know that, that's a concern. We did follow up with NDOT on that. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
George, the present driveway, is it asphalt? Is it gravel?
It's a rock driveway.
And could there be a width expansion of that driveway and to be paved?
Well, the NDOT indicated that within their jurisdiction, it would have to be 40 feet maximum width at the property line.
Say that again?
Forty feet would be the maximum width for the driveway at the property line. Beyond that, it could, it could vary on the private property, but up to the property line, it would have to be 40 feet.
And it's presently 30?
It's, yeah, she indicated it was close to that.
Well, with the resident concerned about traffic in and out, and I can understand there will be larger trucks and stuff coming in to get product and such, should it not be paved and be at 40 foot for the entrance? And then coming into this site, there would be a greater ability to stay off the residential site and on, on the commercial?
Yes, no, that's an excellent question. Planning did discuss this with LTU, kind of in a brainstorm session, and I have an exhibit here that shows some concepts. Once you would get onto private property. We, we don't have control over NDOT's area, but once you get onto private property, we could, as far as the special permit boundary, have a, an alternate plan potentially where there would be like a T or separation of the residential and commercial traffic.
And my understanding is, is that the, the, that garden centers and landscape and so on need to be on 20 acres. Is that changed?
So this site would be 20 acres when measured to the, the center of the road?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So it does meet that 20 acre. Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions for George at this time? All right, thank you.
One last question for George. Sorry. George, on this Plan A and Plan B, have you talked with the applicant about that?
Yes, yesterday I mentioned it briefly to the applicant, that there might be a possibility of contingency or alternate plan on the private property side, yes.
Okay, and what was their reaction?
He didn't seem to be opposed to that. I guess he could comment further if that was a condition that the Planning Commission wanted to consider.
Okay, thank you.
All right, at this time, we will have testimony from the applicant.
I'm the applicant. What do we need to say?
Okay, so, what you will do is you'll come on up, you'll state your name and address, and then you can tell us a little bit about what you're proposing, and then if we have any questions, we will ask.
Blaine Price, 17645 Southwest 27th Street, Martel, Nebraska. Yeah, I guess we're trying to do a landscape supply business on the north side of Lincoln. There's not much up there right now, and just trying to start a new business.
All right, so now, if, if any commission members have questions, I will ask you, and then after we're done asking with any questions, we'll take testimony. If there's anybody here in support of the application, in neutral position or in opposition, then we will go back and ask Mr. Wesselhoff if he has questions, and at that point then, after there's been all that testimony, you have a chance to come back if you would like to address any of the comments that have been made. So, at this point, yes, Mr.?
Have you analyzed the two, the A and B options that George showed us?
Yep.
And are you willing to pave that entrance and?
And I think Sierra Arnett with the state also told me that there would be potentially a proposed deceleration lane along 77, depending on traffic count and all that stuff, but she said after we get this permit, then we go to her and we'll have to figure out a traffic count and all that stuff to figure out what we need to do there.
So it'd be the traffic count that you will create versus what's, what's there now?
Yep.
On that. And so if we made that part of the acceptance of this, that, that it go to a wider width and be separated, that's acceptable to you?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, additional questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will hear testimony in support of this application. Is there anyone here who wishes to testify in a neutral position on this application? And is there anyone here who wishes to testify in opposition? All right, we'll come up one at a time. Name, address?
Jason Schwink, address 11250 North 56th Street. I'd be the property that's just to the north of this that shares the property line. Got lots, lots of concerns, obviously. We built our brand new house back on this acreage in 2015. This is going to be shared access with our private residence drive, so huge, you know, concern there with privacy, you know, public access coming in and out of there. There's always going to be people coming down to our house, without a doubt. The other big concern is the traffic along 77 there is moving at 70 mile an hour. Turn lane's one thing, coming in from one way, but when they're leaving to pull across four lanes of 70 mile an hour traffic, I mean, that's, to me, is pretty dangerous. Also, just, you know, the, the fact that me coming in and out of there, waiting for potential, you know, I assume this is going to be customer based, people coming in and out, you know, I'll be sharing my drive with them, waiting, you know, on a daily basis for traffic, which obviously I wouldn't want to do. Also, the mud and rock that could be, you know, pulled in and out from traffic coming in and out onto my drive on the Highway 77, noise from, from the landscapes equipment at my place, dirt and dust pollution, you know, rock, mulch, anything that they might have over there. Lights, you know, parking lights shining, you know, I'm out on acreage. I moved out there for a reason, kind of get away from all that. So that would be a concern. Water runoff, has there been any studies, you know, so a lot of that water from that land's going to come onto my land. Well, I know the other neighbors that'll come up and speak, we're pretty concerned about, you know, the well water they're going to pull out of there. I think these guys have already had to dig deeper to get water. I've been out there since 2015, so I have really no idea, but that's a concern. And, you know, a lot of other concerns, just I kind of wish I had a little bit more time. I didn't really have a whole lot of time to put things together, but right now, that's all I got.
Okay, questions?
Yeah.
If, if the entrance were to be paved and there were to be two separate entrances then established, and even if signage was put up saying Private Drive and, and Landscape Supply Drive, something like that, would that make it better for you?
I don't think it would, just because of how my drive comes straight. Once you turn off 77, my drive pretty much comes straight down from that entrance. So, you know, it's going to be a straight shot, so I don't know how you would really do things any different.
Okay. Additional questions? Additional questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lance Petrie reside at ten thousand eight hundred North Fifty-sixth.
Can you pull the microphone?
Yes, absolutely. Lance Petrie reside at ten thousand eight hundred North Fifty-sixth Street since the early nineties, I believe nineteen ninety-one. A lot of the things I had to say are going to coincide with Jason's, with a few other things I'd like to add as well. As the gentleman said, there's not much out there as far as commercial that is correct. These areas have always been zoned for farmland and single-family homes, which you have a single-family home to the north, which is ours, and Jason's, or Jason's to the north and ours is to the south, and the proposed garden center right in the middle. Another thing I'd like to address too, is you made the claim that we need, they need to be on twenty acres, and we had spoken and been told a couple times from the property owner, Swanson, that they're going to lease six acres, so I don't know if that's correct or not, but as far as I know, it's leased for six acres, and then the remaining behind the six acres is going to be cornfield, that's going to be farmed by Swanson. A lot of our concerns fall in line with Jason's, the types of equipment that's going to be used, we would like to know about, the hours of operation, the dust pollution is a very large concern of mine, because I know when you have an area that sits at one of the highest peaks in Lincoln, and the wind blows, you're going to have a lot of debris being moved around. Wood chips is going to be a, I believe in my opinion, a dust factor, and it's going to settle when the wind stops blowing, and it's going to settle on the properties around it. Noise pollution, light pollution. Another, another thing that is a great concern is being on Highway seventy-seven and with the traffic flow, we have a lot of mistaken, people mistaking our driveway for another driveway they're trying to get to, so we have a lot of unwanted traffic coming up. And once you enter our driveway, you cannot easily turn around and just leave, you have to commit all the way to the house, which is a couple hundred feet on an S-shaped driveway onto our property, and then you have to turn around on the pavement to leave, and this is something that we see constantly ongoing, and I can only imagine it will be increased with our driveway being mistaken for the nursery proposed to go in. One of the probably the greatest and most concerns we have is the water, the lung that sits on that area, that Jason's residence is drawing from in his well and the well and ten thousand eight hundred North Fifty-sixth Street, our well. We did have to dig deeper, I believe, a few years ago, just to get down to good water, and so how much water is this, you know, going to be drawing off of that water supply? And if there's been any studies to get to this point saying, yeah, it's okay, let's go ahead and, and lease out to this gentleman to do so, I don't think there has been. Another thing that has crossed my mind, and I don't, I'm not quite sure how much you can put into it, but we lost about ninety-plus ponderosa pines to the Japanese beetle, and we have been taking these trees out as an ongoing process and replacing them with trees. And I'd like to have some kind of insurance that bringing wood chips in from other areas that isn't going to promote-
One more minute.
More beetle activity and increased activity with, with beetle destroying, beetle tree destroying beetles. We are in the process of replacing a lot of trees right now, and it's an ongoing process. We're trying to replant, replenish our area with trees. I would like to know that that's not in jeopardy with bringing in wood chips and mulch. The traffic as well, I would like to back Jason up, that Highway seventy-seven is a very dangerous traffic road, and to give somebody a lease and then say, now it's okay to do a traffic count to see if we need to widen a turning lane, I believe is the wrong approach to doing this, that a traffic count should be done before lease is given out or this special permit is granted, because Highway seventy-seven has had fatalities on Waverly Road.
That's time.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay.
Hello, thanks for taking the time to hear us. Shane Petrie, ten thousand eight hundred North Fifty-sixth Street, this is the south of the proposed site. First thing to bring up is the twenty acres, there actually isn't twenty acres there now, it's eighteen point seven-two acres, because when they widened the highway, they took a chunk off the ground, so that's no longer the case if you want to get down to, you know, specifics on it. The biggest concern of mine is the water, the well, I'll bring that up again, and then also, on our property, there is, whenever it rains or whatever runoff is in the center of that proposed site, we get runoff on ours. And I really don't see how, in the springtime especially, when you get a lot of rain, the equipment, traffic in there, there's going to be just a ton of mud on the highway for cleanup, because when they did the dirt mining a couple years ago on that, they had just, it was ridiculous amount of mud and debris that was just drug out of that site all the time, and it was pretty annoying, you couldn't keep your car clean, plus it was just looked bad on the road, and no one would clean that up. But, yeah, definitely the water is a big concern, the well, we did have to re-drill our well from a hundred and eighty, I believe it was originally, to two hundred and fifty feet, and, you know, with the droughts we've been having, I would assume, you know, that that's just going to be a major tax on that area, because we just have basically those two houses on either side are not taking that much water off now, but if you put a nursery in there, you're going to have quite a bit of watering for the, I believe there's almost a thousand trees, is that correct, that you guys are going to probably have on there? And so that's, that's a big concern, is the water, the dust pollution, light pollution. As Jason and Lance both stated, you know, my folks worked hard, my mom still lives there, my dad's deceased, but she worked hard to get a place where she can have the privilege of, you know, seeing stars at night and not having the light pollution in the city. So we're concerned about, you know, yard lights at night, and those can all be addressed if this does go through, I mean, we're people that like to work out and not, you know, just say, hey, this is not something we want, but it's preferably not, but there's quite a few things as far as light pollution, water catching, runoff, mud leaving the site onto the highway. That's, and then, as Jason's point goes, his, he's going to have a lot of traffic coming up his driveway, just people either out of curiosity or just lost, because, you know, landfill is about a quarter mile from our driveway, and we periodically, we're always getting people coming over thinking, where's the landfill driveway? So to think that, you know, you have something closer in like that, it's going to, you're going to get a lot of traffic coming up, and we have a dog on site, he's pretty good, but we don't want him, you know, running off chasing people, some of that seems, may seem trivial, but, you know, people have their pets, they're pretty important to them, and stargazing, and, you know, it's not exactly like the gentleman stated, there's not a lot around there, there is, you know, two livelihoods close by and a way of life that would work hard to get. And like to address the trees, I don't know, are you guys planning on bringing in like debris that people cut down trees and nothing like that? Okay. What about the mulch? Where's the mulch coming from, you know? You know, the, like-
If you want to, sorry- One more minute. Because you only have about a minute, and I'll give you extra ten seconds, because I'm interrupting, but if you want to ask us the questions, then when he comes up for applicant, well, then we can-
My first hearing.
Yeah, just, no, it's totally fine, but it's also just for the record, so that we make sure we can hear your questions on the mic and for people who are watching, so.
Okay. So, yeah, the concern is the mulch, as somewhere it's being ground, from my experience, mulch is ground from down trees from storms or people cutting them down, and, and a lot of that is the trees being cut down, and never going to fight the beetle and get it off-site, it's always going to be there, but to not introduce, you know, a new species, say someone has an exotic tree they cut down, because we got a lot of nice foliage around there, plus habitat back there, and we will be taken away from habitat. We do kind of pride ourselves on our deer and pheasant and quail back there and coyotes, it's a kind of a safe haven for them.
That's time. That's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other additional testimony on this application? All right, we will now have staff questions. Who has questions for? We'll start, we'll, yeah, we'll start with Commissioner Campbell.
George, have you talked to the state about, about the fact of paving that and widening it?
No, I did not discuss specifically the servicing of the driveway access, no.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, so on, let's stay on that with the turning lane, can you review the process? Because what he mentioned is, this has to be the first step, so if you could talk about process?
Sure, yeah, so it'd be, in, in some regards, it would be like in the county on a county road, where there would, if there's a driveway permit required through the county engineer's office, that is something that happens after the special permit, and that would be the same case here. The, you know, it could be an additional condition similar to that, that the applicant obtain the necessary Endot permitting before building permit, I mean, that, that's common with other county permits.
And that's language we would add during our motion?
It, it could potentially be, yes.
Okay, and, so, does that have to be in place for the building process to wait until it was approved with the turning lanes and those types of things?
Yes, you, you could have a similar condition like with other permits, where the applicant could not receive the building permit until the county driveway permit is received, or in this case, the state permit.
Okay. From the water and well access, did you have a chance with the health department to talk further on that?
The, the health might be able to comment on that, I would make distinction that whereas with the prior mining permit years ago, there was a hydrological study required, a water or hydro studies required for mining permits, but that's not a required set of information for a garden center, which is like an agricultural use.
And what is required from the erosion and drainage plan? Because this sets on the hill and it will, you know, the other properties.
I might defer that question to John Barry with the county engineer's office, he might be able to help.
Good afternoon, I'm Barry, Lancaster County Engineering. Generally, when these projects come in, we have a chance to review them, they, they do send in somewhat of a drainage design, our office does look at that, we have several engineers that do take a look at that, and we will determine, we determine then at that point if, if it seems like there is excess water running off of that, which may damage other property. And I believe, without having all my paperwork in front of me, we determined that there was not any significant change, you know, the water now does drain away, it's still going to drain away.
Thank you. And, I had one last question. I think that's it.
Okay.
Well, my question was about the water, and I think you've answered it. Is there any way that it can be studied, where the water table, and if the usage from a garden center would negatively impact neighboring wells?
And so it's not a requirement for a garden center under the special permit regulations to submit a water study like it is for a mining permit?
Mm-hmm.
So I, I'm not aware of any prior special permit for a garden center where that was a condition or requirement.
I did have one other question. On the six acres discussion, and we'll talk more to the applicant about the lease of six acres versus the eighteen point eight versus the twenty acres, including the right-of-way, because that'll tie with the property, what does this do if there is something approved to tie up that entire twenty acres?
Yes, so I, I wasn't aware of the, the six acre figure prior to today, the special permit looks at the whole site, and we measure to the right-of-way, so I don't know that that would affect the special permit, because we look at the property, not if part of it is being used. Their site plan delineates agricultural use on the east side, so if they would deviate substantially from the plan, then they, they would have to come back to amend their special permit, such as if they, you know, expanded with a building addition, for example.
Right, so if it's anything other than like crop or an ag use like that, farming use?
Yes, there'll be a final approved plan that will reflect what would be approved and would have to match that plan.
Awesome, okay.
All right, yes.
Mine was just about the lights, so was there indication on the site plan as to whether there will be floodlights, what that might be?
The applicant may have to answer that question, I don't believe they indicated lighting as part of their submittal.
Okay, great, thanks, George.
Excuse me, I would add to that, as part of the building permit, what about screening options? I know not necessarily for approval here, but would screening options be considered or can be considered?
So that, that's actually a good question, because there is, you may have noticed in the criteria, that if the garden center would have been adjacent to residential zoning instead of ag, there, there would, would have been a different requirement as far as screening, there's not a screening requirement for, versus agriculture, but you, I mean, that could potentially be an option to have screening as a condition to match as if the adjacent property were residential.
Thank you.
George, would that also be for light pollution?
I think, and others can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is, since this is Lincoln Three Mile, the, the light regulations would apply-
Okay.
-for light pollution.
Okay, that's good.
Additional questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and now the applicant has a chance to come up, we can ask and answer some more questions. All right, are there some things you'd like to just address off the top before we start asking questions?
I'll just let you guys ask questions, and if there's anything I don't, or if you guys don't hit, I'll touch on when I'm done. Is that work?
All right, great. Who would like to start?
Are you willing then to, since his driveway goes straight, are you willing to put a, a private drive sign up at the entrance of that, and then align or a sign directing them to the landscape supply?
Yep.
And pave the, the access entrance from the, from the highway?
Yep, and I talked to Jason all early this spring, I think, me and Russ Anderson, who is the property owner, and then my business partner Griffin, we all went over and talked to him and gave him some different ideas and stuff, and he didn't really seem like he wanted any of that stuff at the time. If he would like something like that coming up, I would be willing to supply those options again, just see what happens.
And widen the driveway entrance?
The wide, the driveway, absolutely, I think needs to be widened, I mean, if I'm coming in and out of there with big trucks and delivery trucks and that, it, it definitely needs to be widened out, for sure.
Yeah. Being a person in the nursery industry, I, I am- Uh, being a person in the nursery industry, I, I am fully aware of the existing supply, landscape supply operations that we have. Are you planning on doing any concrete barriers around your different mulch opportunities or rock opportunities?
Yeah, so rock will all be in bins, and that'll have your concrete bins on it, mulch probably eventually will be in the same concrete barriers, and so on and so forth. I think, in, in my site plan, on the bottom, there's a whole bunch of gridded, that's all for bulk materials in concrete bins.
Okay. Um, and to my knowledge, and you can correct me if, if you have other knowledge, the Japanese beetle only will be in a live tree. It will not be in a mulch of any type.
That is correct, I was going to touch on that. Diseases, from my knowledge and from what I've understood, will not carry through mulches.
Right.
Um, it is only through live. And on top of that, I've talked to my mulch supplier, all of their mulch sits in piles for at least one year before they re-diet to get any pesticides out or whatever. It sits in a pile, it gets hot, goes through its whole process, and then pretty much everything is gone before it gets resold and re-ground.
Right. Thank you.
Additional questions? Yes.
So as part of a condition, would you consider putting up any screening to the adjacent property for privacy and perhaps, you know, light pollution from your business?
I think I would be, um, I guess my only other question for you would be is that if I could just do like, are you talking like a tree screen, is that what you're?
There's various types of, of screening that can be.
Okay, because I was going to say, I would be, I would be totally for like looking at like planted trees in a row, I mean, most people around there aren't going to realize that they're all planted in rows, but to me, that would look really nice for my house if you had trees all organized in rows and stuff like that. So if that could be part of a screen, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, yeah, I'll just ask the lighting question, how, you know, what, what does the light look like in your future business?
So I only plan to have a couple of safety security lights on the building, no yard lights or anything like that. And I, the lights on the side of the building aren't going to be like lighting up the whole world by any means, they're just going to be enough that if somebody's outside of their vehicle walking around the building, they can see and not trip on anything or, or whatever there.
And do you have a projection of about how much water it might take for you to run your business?
So I am going to start with just, um, the ground kind of has a gradual slope as it is, and I was planning to put a retention berm in there and use most of that water that runs off of our place to, to water back trees and shrubbery. As far as that goes too, I was also, I've got access to a couple of water tanker trailers, and I'm going to bring those in to start as well.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea of your hours of operation?
Eight to five, Monday through Friday.
So just clarifying, hours of operation is eight to five, Monday to Friday, and open to the general public or open to mainly contractors or both?
General public, and I, sorry, I, I also eight to noon on Saturdays too, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Forgot to put that in there.
Additional questions? Okay, do you have other things you would like to add?
Um, as far as you guys' concerns with like rock and mud coming out onto Highway 77, our whole parking lot will all be rock. And, and there shouldn't really be any contamination of mud in tires tracking out onto the road. And there will also be, I mean, there's a whole big rock driveway coming in and out of there, that's all, um, I don't remember what state specifications are, but they're, they got like a state specification for like inch and a half clean rock to stretch, to stretch tires so all the mud comes off of it. But like I said, even that won't have a problem because our parking lots all rock and should not have a problem there. Um, I think that is all I have on this list too, so.
All right, good question.
Oh, yep.
I'm thinking of snow and snow removal, so are, I actually don't know, maybe it's a George question, so if you all both have a shared entrance and then your driveway's split, who's in charge of clearing the space between Highway 77 and where your driveway's split? To clear off snow, or?
Honestly, I do not know that.
Okay. Any, sorry, I'm going out of order to ask a question that, does the city, do our planners have an answer to who's responsible for cleaning snow off of?
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. I mean, the state is in charge of clearing the state highways.
Okay.
And so Highway 77 is the state highway, they don't stop to clear off everybody's driveway.
So, yeah, so since they share their entrance off of the highway and then it splits on their driveway, how do they know who's responsible for clearing that, like, over the culvert?
And, and beyond the NDOT clearance area, it's the adjacent property owners to clear off the driveway.
Okay.
If they want to sit and argue, well, that's my part of the driveway and this is your part.
Okay, so it'll be their responsibility to discuss.
Just the state's responsibility ends when they've cleared the highway, the rest of it is up to individuals.
I guess I would like to add to that too, if I can.
Yeah.
Um, so I guess with our operation hours, if I want customers to be in my parking lot, I would also clear the path to getting into my place.
Kind of where my question was leading, okay.
Yeah, to, I mean, if I want, if I want customers to come into my place, I'm going to have to get snow cleaned, so yep. That would be my responsibility to get a path to my operation on my hours of operation.
Bailey, I'd like to add to that.
Great.
That it's very unlikely that they would have many customers during the winter.
Good point. I'm thinking of the neighboring neighbor.
Right.
Who would like their driveway and be able to get to the highway.
Right.
So I was just trying to help in that matter of understanding who is going to be in charge of doing that.
Got it.
And, and I guess I'll add too, I still plan to have staff there, either cleaning up stuff, getting ready for the next year, whatever. So I should always have somebody around there if, if we're open, even in the wintertime, I should have somebody around there to get that snow cleared.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I would make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Fite?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
Uh, and I would like to make an amendment that would require the maximum width entry drive possible and for it to be paved to each of their property lanes at least. And then for there to be private signs, signs put up for private, private residents and for a sign to the supply center.
Okay, I hear that, first we need a motion to approve or deny, and then we can amend.
Okay, then I would move to approve.
Second, Joy.
All right, and then.
And then.
Thank you.
My amendment.
And then we will discuss, and then we can vote.
Yeah, I.
Are you amending also?
All right, hold on a second.
Steve Hendrickson again. So, not knowing if you have only one condition or not, but there was multiple conditions that were suggested.
Right.
I've been talking to Tim C. in the city attorney's office, if there is an interest to have a couple of different conditions, our preference really would be that you give us a general indication of those conditions, you don't necessarily have to vote on them today, but that you really then postpone this item for two weeks so we can really draft them properly. Because particularly if you're going to look at lighting or water or some other items, we'd like to make sure we get the right sections of the landscape code, for instance, or the lighting code, so that we could have those for you. You could still vote them up or down in two weeks, but given that there was multiple ones, if that is the interest, we, we think it's best for you to move to delay it two weeks and then give us kind of a laundry list, individual members of, I'd like to consider at least this, A, B, C, D, and E. And then Tim C. said he would get right on that, but it's not probably the best thing to, to do here today on, on the fly.
Good idea.
I would be willing to do that and then would move to defer for two weeks after we come up with the list.
All right, so you've withdrawn your previous motion, and the new motion is now to.
Defer for two weeks.
For two weeks.
Do we have to discuss first before that?
Well, we need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Now, in discuss.
I, the one that I've made, I would like in that study. And secondly, I can testify that the existing landscape supply operations are very, very clean operations. There is not, they, they have rock down for moving to the different areas. And there are not, there's not mud around the operations and such, and I would expect this to be the same. So I, I don't see problems with it being a dirty site.
All right, is there anything anyone else would like to add before we vote on the motion to defer? And then if we do approve the motion to defer, the best way to continue the conversation would be with Mr. Wesselhoff? If, or should we gather those ideas and suggestions now?
We'd prefer to have those now.
Okay.
Certainly after the here, after this item is closed, if there's an additional item, you could let us know afterwards.
Okay.
Because again, it's not binding you to approve any of these, just that we would simply draft them for your consideration at the hearing on December 18th. The hearing is closed, so there wouldn't be any further comments.
Right.
But those potential amendments would be, of course, available for the public once we send them to you.
So I'd like to see a potential condition around, uh, being that this is a unique position with two adjacent ag, zoned ag properties, some screening that would be adjacent for the business and the residential houses and homes that are surrounding the property.
And Lorenzo, if you'd accept a friendly amendment, the, the best screen would be for it to be plant material and preferably evergreen rather than deciduous.
Yes.
And at this time, none of these are motions, these are just, you're providing us to look at topics.
Yes.
And we'll prepare these topics, and then they would be available as motions.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Additional, um, the lighting, just to clarify the requirements for the lighting pollution. And you said with a road signage?
Mm-hmm.
And lights, driveway?
We did that.
Lights, drive. Screening.
Screening.
Signage. I have four.
Correct, that's, that's the part I'd have, I'd break out the signage separate from the driveway width.
Yep. Yep. All right. So with those four items to be taken under consideration, we have a motion to defer action on this item for two weeks.
Okay, Ball?
Any other discussion? Okay, sorry.
Okay. Penny?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Fite?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Just to clarify then, this will come back for action by the planning commission, but the public hearing on this is closed, so there won't be additional testimony, it will just be the discussion on the individual items. And it is a final action item that then can, yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, next item for public hearing is item 4.2, special permit 24035, to allow for a residential healthcare facility for up to 12 residents on property generally located at 3821 South 42nd Street. This is final action. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No.
Good afternoon, Ben Callahan with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. This is a request for a special permit to allow a residential healthcare facility at 3821 South 42nd Street. Kind of an overview of the property, so it's currently zoned R2, it's completely surrounded by other R2-zoned single-family properties. To the west is South 40th Street, and then just down here would be Prescott, so roughly the location. The property is a little over 37,000 square feet in lot area, and then, as I mentioned, would have the existing single-family home on there today. A little bit of background on how the code is set up, so the residential healthcare facility can be applied for by a special permit in our residential zoning districts. Generally is defined as a building or structure to be used in a residential nature and approved by the state or appropriate agency, and then would include different uses such as assisted living, nursing care, memory care, hospice, or a group home for more than 16. Within the code, it calls out the allowed density on the property, so for R2, it allows one resident for every 2,000 square feet of lot area. In this case, with that size, it would, following that code would allow up to 19. The applicant is requesting to cap the resident amount at 12, so seven under what would be allowed under density. A little bit of history, as you might recognize the name on this, but this applicant's been before you twice before, so there are two existing residential facilities, one on Pinedale Court that was approved in 2022, and then more recently, 3737 Calvert Street in 2023. The residents, or the applicants here today, I think can speak a little more, but I believe they're also aiming for the same type of business with specializing assisted living and specifically memory care on site. I know in the past, there's been questions with this use regarding specifically traffic and parking. Similar to the other two uses, this use is not thought to be a high traffic impact on a neighborhood, especially on a larger lot. With this, a lot this size, it could technically have up to four units if it was subdivided, so two on each lot. With this, generally the residents are not having cars on site of their own, so it'd mainly be for the three staff at the largest shift is what they implied, and then any kind of like grocery or supply deliveries. With parking, it does require two spaces for every three employees on the largest shift, and then would require one space for every four residents. In this case, there's a three-car garage on site already, and then the applicant was showing here on the site plan, they would make some minor modification to add a little more concrete and get four additional parking spaces, so they would actually be a little over what they would be required. Outside of that, they're not requesting any waivers to any of the R2 setbacks, so within the side yards and front yard setbacks, and then no expansions to the home shown on this. Currently on the property, there is a larger concrete tennis court that was existing, so they are showing on this that actually a majority of that would be removed, bringing the yard back to a green space with a small pad left for the residents. And lastly, I would want to mention this is in line with our comprehensive plan, especially for our complete neighborhoods and adding a variety of housing options for aging residents of the city. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions at this time? All right, thank you very much. We'll now have testimony from the applicant.
Hello, Chris Gillie, 3101 North 177th Street in Omaha, Nebraska. Glad to be back here, as has been mentioned, kind of not our first time going through this process. I'll be brief, but explain a little bit of the background again, but my sister and I started this venture a few years ago, really it was her, her vision, her dream, as a longtime nurse here in the Lincoln community, that had worked years in senior care, and I just really had a burden that there was, there needs to be some more options for care for seniors in the community. And she had this idea of residential assisted living. I didn't know a whole lot about it, but we started doing some research and we were able to find a, a national association that we have since become a part of, that kind of helped guide us, I think, in the process, that provided support, that gave us models for how it exists in other communities, I think I've shared before, there's tens of thousands of these across the United States. And through the process, we've been able to continue to become more involved to the fact that they actually highlight. fact that they actually highlighted our 3737 Calvert Street in some national media that they did earlier this year. So it's just a kind of a best practice model. But again, I think, you know, what we've been solving for is that gap in senior care, where you get to that point in life to where you have, you need to make some choices. And today, the gap exists from, I mean, most people do want to stay at home, right? That's the desire. And so, but, but at some point, you need to continue to have support, and for that support to come into your home, and that becomes expensive. And at some point, mostly for financial reasons, or because the, the home caregiver can no longer continue to support you, often then you have to make choices that tend to be more institutional. And our really core focus is on memory care, folks with some type of dementia, Alzheimer's. And specifically, this model of care is, is what we feel is best for, for people that suffer from memory issues, something that is small and intimate, doesn't just feel like home, it literally is a home. In fact, that's a mantra we often, we use around what we do, which is real homes, real neighborhoods. So it's not home-like, it's literally in a real, you get all the sights, the sounds, the smells of home. And so we were the first to, to really do that type of model here in Lincoln. We wouldn't be here again if it wasn't, if it hadn't been really successful. As we've mentioned, we currently operate two other senior care homes. We started our first one on 8421 Pinedale, which is just a smaller one with six residents, because we didn't know if we built it, if they would come, right? And they came, and we filled it right away in the first month, and then we went through the process of our second home, and we doubled that with 12 residents. And so this third property, and again, we filled it right away. And so we're basically looking to replicate exactly what we've done in 3737 Calvert, and what we've learned again, is we continue to have really very happy families in our clients that we serve. We've, we've, we continue to get really positive feedback just on how the property looks, because we did a major renovation to it, and we continue to invest a lot of dollars in the upkeep of it. We're continuing to get positive feedback from the healthcare community as, as different providers that, what might come in to service one of our clients, and just what a great atmosphere, what a great service model it is. And we continue to build a waiting list, which is really what's drawing us, like we, you know, we, we, I think we have found we're servicing a need, and we need to continue to invest to, to provide more of those opportunities. One other thing I just want to mention, we did have, we did hold a neighborhood meeting last week, last Tuesday night. We sent out over invites to over 40 addresses surrounding this property, this home. We had, I think it was 12 to 15 people that showed up last Tuesday evening for about 90 minutes of time. I think it represented 10, 10 of the properties, mostly all of the adjacent ones.
One more minute.
It was very, very, like, positive conversation. I think everybody felt good from it. And again, I think it helps the fact that we've been doing this now for a couple of years, and we're just not answering questions with intentions, but with really answering questions based on how we do things, you know, and based on facts and reality. So I think that was, you know, a great start. So with that, that's all I had.
All right. Any questions? Yes.
What kind of parameters do you have in place to really support the safety of your residents because of Alzheimer's and dementia? They tend to not quite know where they are, so what are those types of things that you have in place to keep them from wandering?
Yeah, so first, and first off, so we are state licensed, so we're not only state licensed from an assisted living standpoint, we also have the endorsement as a memory care, as a licensed memory care facility. And so there's, you know, so we're, we are regulated, I guess, and inspected and all of those things with the state. We do have access control for all of our exterior doors. We have a, we have a, you know, a fence in the back, so, so, you know, you can't just leave the property, you can't leave the home. We also have, you know, a very strong care ratio of residents, so again, with three caretakers to 12 residents, I mean, that's a much stronger care ratio than you would find in any traditional assisted living or memory care facility.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, is there anyone here who wishes to testify in support of this application? Anyone here who wishes to testify in a neutral capacity? Oh, sorry, I didn't see you. I apologize.
Katie Hartman, 7800 North 134th Street, Waverly. And I am Chris's sister, and this is my, my passion. So dementia care is what we do, and so I am in support of it. Currently, I administrate, and I am the registered nurse over both of our locations here in Lincoln. And with this third location, we will be having another person administrate over that location, as I'm only allowed to administrate over two locations. So I do have a manager that will be stepping up and administering over the other location that we have that's going to be opening. So at this location, we are going to be doing the same stuff that we've been doing with our other locations, and that is really just, it's a group home. And it operates as one, and it operates no different than any other home where you have somebody living there that has medical needs as far as like needing help with ADLs, activities of daily living, and just being in support of someone who may eventually need a wheelchair or, or that, we know that this disease progresses. So we, the home is set up to care for them until end of life, and we do that very well. And we definitely make sure that the home is beautified, and we get lots of comments from neighbors about how nice our properties are, and we are good neighbors. And so that is really what sets this whole piece apart, is that we are willing to do what it takes to be in the neighborhood and get to know the neighbors just like any ordinary homeowner would do. So that is very important to us, that we have good relationships with them. So, so yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Is there anyone else here who wishes to testify in support or in a neutral capacity? And is there anyone here who wishes to testify in opposition to this application today? Does anyone have questions for staff?
No.
Any need for applicant rebuttal?
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Byte?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move that we approve special permit 24035.
Second, Joy. Discussion?
Yeah. I, we've had them before us for both of the other applications, and I know on the one on Calvert, there was a lot of concern of what was going to happen with that type of an operation in the neighborhood. But we've heard zero complaints since, since approving that, and I think this is a very well-run operation, and I applaud them finding that middle ground of what's needed in the community. So I'll be voting for this.
Yes.
I agree with Commissioner Campbell. I live quite close to the Calvert, drive by it almost every day. There were concerns about traffic, there were concerns about how the place was going to look. You can't even tell that it's a, a place where they're housing our, our seniors, and none of us here are not getting older. And I think, I think that we need facilities like this, and I think that the, these folks have proven themselves worthy of, of running, and they're regulated, so I'm going to vote for this.
And I would add to the comments of fellow commissioners, I think finding creative ways to do things in Phil, right, and not having separate facilities does provide, you know, a different environment, right? And I think it does lead to creativity and finding that gap, so I appreciate, you know, you doing it.
Need to repeat, just thank you for what you do. I had a grandmother with dementia, so I appreciate all that you're doing for that population.
All right. Thank you. Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Byte?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
All right. I am going to suggest that before we move to our next item, but do you have something you would like to present?
No, mostly just for the next item for the county special permit, the sign-in sheet was open, and so you have people signing up who were for or against, or didn't state one way or the other. So our recommendation is that we just call that list off, so that would not, after the applicant presentation is complete, that we would just then use the list to go off of, to call names, so that we would not necessarily be calling all the people in support first and neutral, and then opposition. As our normal procedure, we'll just be using the list, and so people will be speaking for and against one after another.
And it will be in the order that Shelley will call them up?
Correct.
Okay. I am going to suggest that we take a seven-minute break and come back at, oh, eight, 2:25. So that way, everybody can take a quick bathroom break and come back and give us a minute so we can get started. Shelley will call names in advance, so you kind of know where you are, so that we can try and be respectful of everyone's time and make sure everybody has a chance to be heard today.
One piece.
All right, Ms. Wesselhoff.
Well, first I should probably announce the public hearing item.
That we can go in order.
So we are on item four point three, county special permit two four zero three six, for the Panama Energy Center to allow for the construction of a large solar energy conversion system in compliance with section thirteen point zero five one of the Lancaster County zoning regulations, a property generally located between West Princeton Road and West Gage Road, and from Southwest Twenty-Ninth Street to Highway seventy-seven. This is final action. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No. George.
Thank you, George Wesselhoff, Planning Department, five five five, South Tenth Street. Again, the location is southern Lancaster County, adjacent to Gage County. The project area ranges from West Gage Road on the south to Princeton Road to the north, West Princeton Road, and then Southwest Twenty-Ninth Street on the west to Highway seventy-seven and South Twelfth Street on the east. You have the Village of Hallam to the west, and you also have in Gage County, Cortland, which is to the southeast. And the application is for a large solar energy conversion system with a capacity of up to three hundred and four megawatts. This is a use allowed by the special permit under the Lancaster County zoning regulations, article thirteen point zero five one. The project will be broken into two phases. It would be operational in twenty twenty-six, and then they would commence construction on phase two in twenty twenty-seven and be operational in twenty twenty-eight. The project would also include one hundred and twenty megawatts of four-hour discharge battery energy storage facilities, along with a substation and possible operation and maintenance facility. The battery storage will generally be located south of West Pella Road to the east of Southwest Twenty-Ninth Street, so in this area here. The power would be purchased, a Nebraska Public Power District is contracting to purchase the output from the facility per the applicant. This special permit covers approximately two thousand four hundred and forty-two acres. The project area mainly contains farm ground, which is the mainland used east of the Village of Hallam to Highway seventy-seven. In terms of nearby homes... In terms of nearby homes, there are two homes in the participating property area, around fifteen homes which are not in the participating property area, but that are immediately adjacent or across the road in Lancaster County, and then in addition, there are around three dozen or thirty-six homes that are in the general vicinity, within a half mile or less away. The various homes are scattered, these blue areas are the homes that are scattered around this large project site. There are no residential community plans or large residential subdivisions in this area. And then as far as across the county line on the south side of West Gage Road in Gage County, I believe there's like three or four residential homes as well, so there are some homes in the area. The project will consist of solar panels mounted on horizontal-mounted tracking systems that will likely include connections via existing transmission lines, underground collection lines, utility perimeter fencing, access roads, and associated infrastructure. The maximum height of any solar panel will not exceed fifteen feet, per their notes on their site plan, that also matches the height limitation that's in the Lancaster County zoning regulations. The Health Department was one of the review agencies for this project, and they did review, they did not discern any issues or concerns with the solar panels. They do have comments that are reflected in conditions of approval as far as submitting technical specifications for the battery chiller system and acoustical or noise information referenced in the application prior to building permit, and those pertain to the substation, and I'll get more into the regulations shortly here. The twenty fifty comprehensive plan supports renewable energy sources, including solar, and this particular special permit type is relatively new in the Lancaster County zoning regulations. It was about four years ago when the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners added it as a use in anticipation of future demand or need for solar, so it's a relatively new special permit type in the regulations. I would note, just generally speaking, in terms of applications in general, this was a very complete and thorough application. The applicant submitted all the required documents, in addition to that, they submitted multiple supplemental documents which were not required for the special permit, and I'll let the applicant go into the details on those, but they include a sightline study, environmental compliance, emergency action plan, and an economic impact study. So I will go into the regulations as it relates to this project next. The, as I mentioned, the solar energy conversion system was added to the zoning regulations by special permit in July of twenty twenty. The first criteria is that the large solar facility shall use photovoltaic cells to convert solar energy into electricity. One of the application exhibits shows the equipment for solar, solar modules, excuse me, so they meet that criteria, obviously. The other criteria, the next criteria has to do with the noise, which I mentioned, is one of the comments of the Health Department. The criteria B under the special permit section states that no electrical substation owned or operated by a private electric supplier, which is a private developer, can exceed these noise standards during this, from the hours of ten PM to seven AM, and from the hours of seven AM to ten PM, and there's fifty and sixty decimal maxims over an average time period, which the Health Department, they are here today, they can answer any specific questions as they would get into the details of this. So the applicant will be providing the noise information, noise study, that it will be a requirement, that's a condition prior to building permit. Another condition, or the next condition, is an approved erosion control plan from the Lower Platte South Natural Resources District, or Omaha Natural Resources District, depending on jurisdiction, and so that will be submitted for those jurisdictions to review, that's a condition prior to building permit. Another substantial criteria is screening for non-residential, or excuse me, for non-participating residential uses. Specifically, the standard calls for a screen shall be required if the closest exterior wall of a dwelling is within three hundred feet of the property line, adjacent to the solar facility. And so this would, if required, this screen would cover one hundred percent of the surface area extending on a plane, vertical plane along the property line adjacent to the facility, to an amount equal to or greater than the surface area of the dwelling to be visually screened, and it would be a height of eight feet. Their screening could, and the regulations can include different types, they're proposing deciduous and evergreen trees for that, there are exhibits for that, if there's questions on that, we could go further into that, but they are providing screening for non-participating properties, and that is, was reviewed by Planning Department as far as compliance with, with the screening requirements. The next piece of the regulations has to do with a decommissioning plan, that is a requirement after the life of the project, what is going to happen, and that is accounted for in the decommissioning plan, which includes removal of equipment and improvements and restoration of the lands. A decommissioning plan was submitted with the application, project components that are subject to decommissioning include the solar, solar equipment, internal power collection system, battery energy storage, earthwork, roads, and fencing. The salvage value in their information is approximately eighty million. The cost to obtain the material and remove everything as required is about nine million, so the net profit of the salvage operation would be currently seventy-one million, and so due to the high value, at this time, a surety is not required. It is in the conditions that there's a fifteen-year timeframe, or if that becomes an imbalance, then it would be required, but not at this time. The last major regulation has to do with setbacks from non-participating properties and the roads. The setback from a non-participating property that has a house is one hundred feet, and these setbacks are measured from the solar equipment to the property line. The setback from a non-participating property that doesn't have a house is fifty feet, and then the setback from the, to the road is fifty feet as well. And to put this in perspective, within the city, we do have, like the H four zoning district has a fifty-foot setback for commercial uses versus residential, like if you had a car wash in an H four, you'd have to have a fifty-foot setback from a residential zone. Also, B five zoning, for example, has a one-hundred-foot setback, B five would be like a use permit, like gateway. So I would like to just touch on the notifications, I know that was a question or concern. This map exhibit here shows signs, a sign is required to be posted, in this case, eight signs were posted just in areas all around the project area, so there were eight signs posted, and then I know there was a concern or question about notifications, there was a very large notification that went out, the ordinance requires a ten-day minimum mailing, so the letters have to go out to property owners within a mile, within ten days at least of the hearing. The letters went out on Friday, November twenty-second, prior to the week of Thanksgiving. Once those letters leave the building, we, it's beyond our control, it's the United States Postal Service, obviously, if they didn't get the letter before Thanksgiving, there was no mail on Thanksgiving, but they did go out Friday, the twenty-second of November, and there was a very large mailing, and that, that list of notifications is on the PATS website, on our website for the project. Finally, I would just mention before taking questions, that John Berry with the County Engineers Office has a few comments after I speak as well, but at this point, I can answer any questions you may have.
Start over here with Bishop Campbell.
George, didn't on the East Lincoln Solar Complex, didn't the county end up setting the two hundred and fifty-foot setback?
That's a good question. There was a greater setback that was required when it was appealed to the county board. The regulations have not changed, but when that project was appealed to the county board, the county board decided to have additional setback in that case.
Additional questions for staff? I'm sure there will be more, but let's go ahead. You're from the County Engineers Office.
Good afternoon, John Berry, Lancaster County Engineering, four 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 Cherry Creek Road. I get, I get the opportunity to work with planning quite a bit. George and Steve have done a very good job and very thorough with this project. I know there's a lot of questions, and those will get answered here. A couple of items I do want to bring forward, there were conditions that, that were stated in the planning, in the planning report. The first one being road maintenance agreements. Lancaster County will require, if this moves forward, a road maintenance agreement with either the applicant or the contractor. We are very concerned about, during the construction phase of this, the trucks that will come in will be large, they will be hauling in materials that, that aren't going to be really light, they could damage, potentially damage our roads. So at that point, we will have them sign a road applica, or a road agreement. Generally, in those agreements, it talks about dust mitigation, so watering if possible. It also talks about bringing dirt or soil onto our roadways. It also does talk about extra grading that may happen, and who's going to be responsible for do that. Along with those, with that document, they also have to provide a route map, which shows the routes that the trucks will take, or the vehicles will take, coming in and out of the sites, so that is also part of that agreement, and that's called out in two point three. On two point five condition, it talks about permits, access permits specifically. On the plans that were provided, they showed a couple of accesses onto Hallam Road. Hallam Road is a state highway spur, so those permits will have to go into NDOT, and those, those driveways will have to meet all of their standards. The rest of the driveways are onto county roadways. Those, those permits go into our office, our right-of-way department looks at those. They have certain requirements as far as site distance, sizes of culverts that have to be put under there, how big the driveways can be, so all those conditions will also have to be met. One of the concerns that we do have is, is actually drainage when, when there's a large storm event. I know that's a concern for a lot of people. The plans do show detention ponds, however, on the plans, they do have a note on there that, that says that detention is subject to change based upon final engineering plans. I do realize that the zoning regulations for this special permit, they really don't have any language requiring detention, they don't even really talk about storm, stormwater and where that's going to go. However, if this does move forward, there is a special, special requirement one point six that does say drainage, a drainage report will need to be provided. At that point, that is something that we'll have a chance to review, and we can go over that and see where all that water's going to go, because generally, one of the comments that we have is that we do not want extra water draining onto our roadways. Our culverts, we want to evaluate those to make sure those can handle anything that comes at us. So I mean, I'd be happy to answer any questions I can at this time.
Questions at this time? All right, thank you very much. All right, at this time, we will have testimony from the applicant.
Madam Chair Commissioners, good afternoon. David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, six twenty-five South Fourteenth Street, here in Lincoln, Nebraska.
Hi, my name is Matthew Jones, I am a representative for Next Air Energy, and I am at seven hundred Universe Boulevard in Juneau Beach, Florida. Got it. Again, I'm here to present Panama Energy Center, a project that we are working on a special permit for in Lancaster County. I am the developer for the project. I've been working on this project now for, for several years, and as I stated, I work for a company, Next Air Energy. Next Air Energy started as Florida Power and Light in nineteen twenty-five, and has two primary subsidiaries, Next Air Energy Resources and Florida Power and Light. Florida Power and Light is a regulated utility that serves roughly half of Florida Power and Light is a regulated utility that serves roughly half of Florida. And Nextera Energy Resources was founded in 1998 as FPL Energy and is a diversified clean energy company with, with an emphasis on power generation and energy services. As a company, we own and operate power generation facilities using all of the fuels that you see on the screen. We believe they are all necessary as part of a diversified energy generation portfolio to support the United States economy. And as I said, we are an American-owned and operated company based in Juneau Beach. A little bit about our company and our business in Nebraska. We started working in Nebraska in 2012 and commissioned our first project in 2013. We now operate four wind projects totaling 574 megawatts and one five-megawatt solar project combined. This is enough power to, or enough energy to power approximately 217,000 homes annually. And just for context, our solar project that we have is called Fort Calhoun Solar, and it's a five-megawatt solar project that was built in 2019. The portfolio is a total capital investment of more than $820 million. And also want to provide some additional context for, for you all. We have approximately 1,000 megawatts of solar projects under development or construction in Nebraska. One of those projects is a 590-megawatt solar and storage project named Pierce County Energy Center. I'm also the developer for that project. And it's expected to be in service in May of 2027. Pierce County Energy Center will add an, an additional $800 million roughly in capital investment in the state of Nebraska, bringing the total to 1.6 billion. And just on the screen, we're showing, you know, the annual property tax that we pay and our annual payroll. So we are a company that owns and operates our facilities. We have employees here in the state of Nebraska for all of these five projects that I mentioned and will for our six projects. And we pay annually 5.6 million in land payments on those projects. A little bit about the technology. Solar panels are made of glass, copper wire, plastic polymer, silicone, and they have an aluminum frame. Silicone is derived from quartz sand and is used to create the PV cells that are anywhere from a half an inch to four inches across and are then laid out across the panels. These are all naturally occurring materials. Modern solar panels do not contain heavy metals. And when light hits the PV cells, the cells absorb the light energy and convert it to electrons, which are captured and sent to the inverter to step up the voltage. The electrons then move to the project substation before entering the OPPD transmission system, or I'm sorry, the NPPD transmission system in this case. Solar panels typically last for 25 to 30 years. And they can be recycled or repurposed at the end of their useful life. Companies like SolarCycle have developed processes to return more than 90% of the valuable materials in a solar panel to the solar supply chain. And we think that that's something that is only going to get, going to get better as we move forward. Next, we'll talk a little bit about the project. I know we hit on this a little bit just at the top of the meeting, but Panama Energy Center sits east of Hallam, south of West Princeton Road, east of Southwest 29th Street, and then north of West Gial Road. The project is strategically located near the Nebraska Public Power District's Olive Creek Substation, where it will interconnect. It's about a mile and a half away. The panels will stand approximately 10 to 12 feet off the ground at their peak during the morning and afternoon hours. And then in the midday, the panels, panels will be laying flat and approximately six feet off the ground. In the application, we provided 15 visual simulations on the proposed array, which also includes vegetative screening and setbacks that meet the solar regulations that Lancaster County currently has. A little bit about the project itself, Panama Energy Center. I think it was mentioned already that it's a 304-megawatt, two-phase solar energy and storage project. It represents an investment of roughly 598 million and will create more than 250 construction jobs. It will bring approximately $42 million in new tax revenue to Lancaster County and will add an additional 54,000 American homes, or enough energy to power 54,000 American homes Some additional information on the project. The project includes approximately 1,700 acres with infrastructure of the roughly 2,400 that make up the project. 1,500 acres will have panels, and we expect to pay roughly $61 million in landowner payments over the course of 30 years. The project's contracted with an off-taker customer already. And it complies with the Lancaster County zoning regulations in all respects. And, and as was stated earlier, it exceeds those regulations in many ways. A little background on the project and the development timeline. There were Q positions filed with Southwest Power Pool in 2013 for this project. We acquired the development rights in 2017 to those Q positions. And then in March of 2019, we signed our first solar agreement for the project. In October of that same year, we filed a second Q position at the same point of interconnect that this project that we filed, that was filed in 2013. So just again, a second, a second Q position to bring us up to the 202 megawatts for the Phase 1 portion. And then in February of 2024, we modified that generator interconnection agreement to be all solar. And then as most of you are, are aware, we submitted our CUPA application in November. We expect to start construction on this project sometime in July or August of 2025. And we'll hopefully complete the project. The target is December 1st, completed on, on December 1st of 2026. And then we have a target commercial operation date for Phase 2. So this actually is wrong. Phase 2 will be December of 2028. So just wanted to give the full timeline of, of kind of what we're expecting here. Tax benefits. Wanted to give a breakdown just of the tax revenue that will be generated by the project and how we got to the numbers that we mentioned. So in, in, in Nebraska, there are two forms of tax on renewable energy projects, the nameplate capacity tax and then real property tax. In the case of nameplate capacity tax, it's a number state, set by state statute.
3,518 per megawatt per year.
And this money is paid by the developer. And 100% of the funds on this project will then be dispersed to Lancaster County, the treasurer, and divided among the political subdivisions in this county. The real property tax is assessed on the project improvements such as roads, fences, leasehold value. This is all subject to valuation by Lancaster County Assessor. And we estimate an additional $500 per megawatt per year, which conservatively brings us to a total of $4,000 per megawatt per year. In this application, we provided an in-depth economic impact analysis by the Bureau of Business Research at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. This study substantiates this figure and sets forth a total regional economic benefit of approximately $406 million over the project's operational life. As I mentioned earlier, we have five operational projects in Nebraska and a sixth on the way. Pierce County Energy Center, as I mentioned, is under construction. That will be number six. For all of these projects, our business model is to own and operate projects, with each project having a long-term contract with local businesses and/or a utility to sell the power generated. As part of this business model, we hire local employees and have a presence in the community that we operate in throughout the life of the project. This typically consists of local sponsorships, first responder training, tours, regular landowner and county official outreach. And this is something that I've personally participated in during my career at Nextera. I've hosted meetings in Wayne County, Jefferson County, and Webster Counties for operational projects, steel flats and choles. On these projects, we're not only partnering with communities and landowners to create a commodity, but we've got and been entrusted with and have, and act as stewards of their land while projects are under construction, while they're operating and while they're being decommissioned.
We'll need to wrap it up here soon.
We're committed to maintaining this approach on Panama Energy Center and, and want to do that as this moves forward. I've added my contact information if people have any questions and want to reach out directly. Many of the people in the audience, I've already been in contact with at meetings and during outreach. And I encourage the planning commission to approve the special permit for Panama Energy Center. The project meets and exceeds all the solar regulations in Lancaster County. And this approval will bring much-needed tax revenue to the community and opportunity for private landowners to exercise their constitutional right within legal regulations to use their land as they choose. In this case, bring clean, affordable, reliable, American-made energy to the market for years to come. I appreciate, I appreciate your consideration and the opportunity presented today.
I won't add anything at this time. I know we've been here for a minute. Thank you for the extra time. We are happy to answer any questions if any of you have them at this time. And we'll certainly, of course, be here for applicant rebuttal.
All right.
Have you had any community meetings or with the neighborhoods or with the area around these facilities?
We, we actually had our most recent meeting last night, had, had some folks from the community there, landowners in particular, and community members that we're familiar with in the community. So yeah, we have. And we've been, you know, through our land team, reaching out to people adjacent to the project. Our land agent, George, is in the audience today, and he's contacted everybody, I would say, within a mile of the project at some point or another.
All right, we can't have comments, sorry.
But yes, the answer is yeah.
Are there federal funds involved, federal grants? Are you getting some money from the federal government?
In, in the U.S., all forms of energy have some form of subsidy, just as part of the national security plan for the country. So whether it's, and we, as I mentioned in the beginning, we, we operate nuclear plants, gas plants, solar, wind, storage, everything. And so with that experience, I think we've come to realize quickly that every form of energy is in some way getting some type of fund or grant or subsidy. So yeah.
And to follow up with the change of administration, are any of those grants and funds in jeopardy?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. I have a clarifying question on the map that's on your PowerPoint, if it's possible to go back to that. I'm just curious what the numbers mean. So there's little tiny circle numbers. I'm curious what those stand for.
Good question. So we, I think it was mentioned that we had done, just in the application as part of our analysis, done some visual impact studies. So what those numbers represent are the locations for all those studies. So we did before and after photos that not only had, you know, obviously before the panels, after the panels, and then with screening.
Okay.
So this is a key plan.
And we can see those photos in the?
In the application. Yep. So we did 15 locations and they're all, they're all in there.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
All right, yeah.
Okay, so when you talked about the process, energy in Nebraska is still public power. And, but you talked about submitting a proposal to be able to be selected to be the developer of this project. Maybe just give a little history on how energy is developed, because it looks like that company that you put your proposal in controls our power in the central region.
Want me to?
Yes, you can hit it if you want.
Just a little bit.
Yes, we won't, we won't do the full dissertation.
Right, right.
No. So what Matt mentioned was the Southwest Power Pool.
Right.
The Southwest Power Pool is an organization that operates the regional transmission grid. Essentially, if you think about kind of the middle of the country from North Dakota down all the way to the northern part of Texas, there are parts of Missouri and so forth. So Southwest Power Pool doesn't own or operate Generation. They're the regional manager and operator of the transmission system. And they call on Generation as needed to keep the lights on, essentially. You mentioned in Nebraska, our utilities are, are public. They're customer-owned entities. What that actually means is in, in Nebraska, only a customer-owned, public entity or nonprofit entity cooperative can sell electricity at retail to the end-use consumer. But private companies like Nextera can build, own and operate Generation and Transmission that they then sell wholesale, either to a Nebraska utility or through a Nebraska utility to a Google or a Facebook or a Smuckers or Vail Resorts, Hormel. Those are all actual companies who, on paper, buy electricity generated from renewable energy facilities located in Nebraska. So when we say we're all public power, what that really means is that the retail end-use consumer level, what we're talking about here is really at the, at the wholesale, you know, utility-scale generation. But this is then sold to a utility or through a utility, not to the end-use consumer.
So 10 years ago, you submitted a proposal against your competitors to be able to be a developer in, for this type of scenario? And then started the process?
That was the application to the Southwest Power Pool. Southwest Power Pool doesn't say you can build this, or you can't build this, or you should build this here, you should build it over there.
My question.
What, what they tell you is if you want to put, in this case, 304 megawatts of solar-generated electricity on the grid at the Olive Creek Substation, here's, you need to upgrade this line or this substation, or this line or that line. And, and they give, and that, it comes with a cost, sometimes very large cost, which factors into the economics of the project. And so what you need for a project, Nextera is a private entity, doesn't have eminent domain authority, so they need willing landowners. And they need a good resource, the sun, the soil, right? Something we've used in Nebraska forever to generate a commodity. And then they need available transmission that's economically feasible. And so it's that last part that the submission to the Southwest Power Pool determines. And then when you get to the end of that process and everybody says, okay, this works and, and we want to do this, you execute what Matt referred to, which is the generator interconnection agreement. That's a three-party agreement with the developer, the owner of the generation facility, the utility, the transmission owner, so in this case, NPPD, and the Southwest Power Pool. So that's the agreement basically governing how they'll interconnect to the grid.
Excellent. And when you talked about the annual jobs for this development specifically, what are you looking at for a number of people?
I think we were looking at somewhere between, you know, two to four full-time employees in the area, you know, doing mowing and maintenance and maintaining the facility. And then during construction, we've got two phases. So there will be, you know, obviously the first phase, we expect to have roughly 250 people there between August or, or so of 2025 and December of 2026. And then they'll all go home for a period of time and then come back to build Phase 2 sometime in 2027 and then complete the project in 2028. So.
Excellent, thank you.
Will you be contracting with the local contractors for the, the building?
We, we're working on that right now, and it hasn't been finalized. But I think what we do is typically participate, both us and what we call the EPC, the engineering, procurement, construction kind of relationship that we'll have to build the project. In the case of Pierce County Energy Center, that's a company called Blatner. And they, my understanding is they hold job fairs to try and hire local employees if they're doing things like cleaning up the job site or doing security or something along those lines. If there's specific trades that are available in Nebraska, then we'll try and hire them. Of course, having local people is a much better option than having someone come from far away. So I think that that's always something that they're doing to try to optimize, you know, their process and our process. So we always, again, try and hire local people whenever we can.
And then also procure materials locally. You know, solar panels, nobody's making solar panels in Nebraska, but gravel and fencing and things like that, that you can procure here. Typically, they'll try and do that. It's just, it's cheaper and easier and beneficial to the community.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would anticipate overhead power lines coming from this plant to a substation. Can you show us where those would be?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's off the map, but we, West Pella Road, it's running there on the map, kind of straight through, but we've got, we've got a roughly 1.3-mile run to get to Olive Creek. So we're working with landowners, as well as Nebraska Public Power District, and we want to continue to work with Lancaster County on a solution to get the Generation tie line connected. It's a Generation tie line is essentially the cord that connects our solar project to the grid, and it will, on this project, be owned by Nebraska Public Power District. Just, that's the way that public power works, is when we build these projects, we do some upgrades to the transmission system, and we also build a Generation tie line, and that all becomes property of Nebraska Public Power District at the end of, you know, our construction.
Thank you.
Yeah. What's the plan for, you mentioned hiring people to maintain and mow and things like that. So what do you plan to grow underneath the solar panels? Or you just, like, yeah, what's that plan?
Yeah, we, that's a good question. We, so we, we work with Olson and have an extensive environmental team internally as well, but Olson is the one that will work on our vegetation management plan, and that's part of our application. And so typically, we like to have low-growing native grasses and things, you know, keeping the soil in place is obviously critical. We want to add as much biodiversity as we can to the area. And so the idea generally is to try and plant some low-growing native plants, grasses, and all of that is extensively laid out in our vegetation management plan. And, you know, we welcome any feedback you have on that prior to the start of construction.
Someone had written in saying they didn't want to see chain-linked fences all around these facilities. What is your typical fence?
Another good question. We, you know, I think, and again, we're always open to feedback, but they have something called game fence. So these projects, as you can see, they, they're kind of like little pods that are defined by the landscape itself, and, you know, kind of the rivers and low points and wetlands and different things. So what you've got here is rather than having a fence around the whole project, let's say you'd have fences around the pods themselves. And so game fence is what we are proposing on this project, which allows for, you know, animals to, and wildlife to cross through the riparian areas and kind of move around, migrate back and forth however they would. And then the game fence is wide enough, the openings are wide enough, where not only is it kind of less to look at, but also it allows for some of the wildlife to move through as well. So that's what we are proposing, and that's laid out in our application.
Additional questions at this time? You know, we'll have more.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Shelley, you want to name our first people that will be called up?
I apologize ahead of time if I don't pronounce your name correctly. So I'm going to call the first three people I have on my list, and you can make your way towards the front here. Eldon Cole, Kim Top, Andrew Top.
Good afternoon. I'm sure this is how you wanted to spend your whole afternoon. My name's Eldon Cole. My wife and I, Sandy, live at 28805 Southwest 29th Street. We're directly across from the largest parcel that's involved in this. But can I ask you guys questions?
We, yeah, you can, you can tell us what you want to tell us. We can't respond. We will ask questions of our, the applicant and the staff, if there are things you want more information about. We can do that. And then also, we will have discussion at the end of all the testimony.
Okay, I just was trying to make sure this wasn't an exercise in futility, and I'll tell, the reason I say that is because one of my neighbors has already begun to dismantle his center pivots. And that leads me to believe he either is not very prudent, or he knows something I don't know. So that's where I'm coming from with that. If you read through most of the statements that this company put forward, they, I have a lot of questions, and I can't ask them all here today. And I hope you have a bunch of questions, too. I'm going to have to get my cheaters, sorry.
That's fine. While you're unfolding your glasses, I will just say, we do receive emails daily or sometimes multiple times a day with copies of all of the public comments that are submitted, and we are expected to have read those prior to the beginning of the meeting, and we were getting them even this morning. And so I do want people to know we have received those and have read those.
Okay, that, and I'm more concerned with all the information that the utility company or the electric company has come up with, because there's some things in there that I, I just have questions about. Why, one of my questions is, why is it not required to have the surety right when they start the project? Because if you look at this, they say they don't have to have the surety for 15 years. And they say it's because, well, the salvage value is better than, you know, what we would need. That's not true if a tornado comes through and takes every one of those panels and scatters them throughout the county. That's, nobody's going to salvage damaged equipment. So that's one of my questions. And we have hailstorms and tornadoes and wildfires. We just recently went through a really dry patch where we were threatened with wildfires. We were asked to get out of the field a couple of different times because the weather was so bad, and the threat of fire was so bad that they didn't want combines and that kind of stuff in the field. So my question is, what are they going to do about this company when the weather's so bad that, you know, any little spark is going to be a problem? On the financial impact statement, they claim that they're going to put so much money into Lancaster County through taxes and that kind of thing. My question is, aren't we kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul? They're getting a subsidy from the federal government via our taxes. They take their share out and then hand it back to us. That doesn't make any sense to me. And farmers are already paying taxes on their properties. Nobody has said anything about what's going to happen when you take 2,400 acres out of production. That's a certain amount of food, but what about Ott Oil? What about the John Deere dealer? What about the international dealer? These farmers aren't buying equipment. They're not paying sales tax on seed?
One more minute.
And the other inputs from farming. Obviously, I'm not going to get to all my questions. During my career as a realtor and a builder, highest and best use was a term that I know you're familiar with. Agriculture, to me, is the highest and best use of ground that is irrigable, that is fertile. And we need food. Electricity is pretty new on the scale of need compared to food. So I would just ask humbly that you consider some of these effects on what this project will do to us. I know other people are going to talk about the visual and all that kind of stuff, and that's all important, too. But I really do think that part of our obligation
That's tight.
as citizens is to think about everybody in this situation, not just the people that will benefit financially. Because financial is not necessarily the highest and best use of a piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kim Top. I live at 1820 West Ash Road. We have two properties that would be surrounded by solar panels if this is built.
Could you speak up a little bit, Kim?
Southwest, yes.
Thank you.
We have two properties that would be surrounded by solar panels if this is allowed to be built. Southwest Second and West Pella Road, and then Southwest Fourteenth and West Gage Road, it is. It's not Gale Road. Anyway, lots of concerns, just like Eldon said. We received three letters of notification of this. We got them yesterday in the mail. I know the planning department has said they're not responsible for what happens with the postal service after the postmark. We're not really responsible either. Another comment along that line, if there was a meeting offered by Panama Energy last night, I don't know anything about it or where it was. My opinion is, they have not tried to work with the community to educate or be interested in what we are feeling about the process. The first lease, as they noted, was signed in 2019, so four to five years they've had to help the people out that are going to be mostly affected by this. This solar farm will destroy property values. I'm a real estate broker, too. People look in a certain area where they want to live, and if there's a rumor of a proposed solar farm, they don't want to look at anything five to 10 miles in that radius. There's no doubt it will destroy property values, land values, home values. We have a son and daughter-in-law that live right next to an NRD structure that would be surrounded on three sides by these. Two small children, six and four. Does anybody know what happens to you when you grow up for 30 years around solar panels? That's not discussed. We talk about noise and light. We don't talk about cancer and chemicals and erosion running into those structures, those ponds, those rivers. They said they're going to plant grass or weeds or whatever they are going to do, but it takes quite a while to plant and get things to grow that's going to stop erosion into those things. I'm kind of running wild with my notes here. But we expect to pay our real estate taxes, and the government expects us to pay our taxes. And then Panama Energy gets that money, and then they come back and destroy our property. Doesn't seem quite right. I was told by one Nextera person that they don't get government money. Well, I don't know what else you'd call tax credits if it's not government money. I'm not going to talk as much about the health risks because I don't know as much about that. I think it's been very quiet over the years about that. The leases that people are signing are 30-year leases. Do we know if there's a solar farm that's been in production for 30 years? Anybody? Anywhere? There's a lot of LLCs involved with this company. I have to believe that if it's not a good project, they'll be able to bankrupt one of those. And then that decommissioning fund, where's that at? And who will be left with the mess? Those of us that live around it. One of the primary concerns I have is, yes, they have said they will pay out $61 million in lease on this ground over, I guess, 30 years. There's nine owners that have signed leases on their property. Two of those people live in this area. The others are absentee, so they aren't going to be affected by what this destruction does. They don't have to look out their front door, their back door, or drive through it every afternoon or morning when they leave. I can't imagine that this is defined as clean energy. Nine square miles, that's 105 million square feet covered with solar panels. I don't know what the game fencing looks like that he mentioned. I've driven past an 80-acre solar farm that is nothing but ugly. Tall chain-link fence, several rows of barbed wire on top of that. It looks very much like a prison yard. I can't imagine that the economic, the positive economic impact is very good. They say they're going to supply, he said, two to four permanent jobs. How many jobs are they going to eliminate along the way, as Eldon mentioned?
One more minute.
Okay, one more minute. I would like to know if any of you live within five or 10 miles of the radius of this farm. And also consider when you're voting for this, if you'd like it to be built in your front or backyard. Then would you support it? Thank you.
Shelley, you want to go ahead and say who the next people will be, so they're ready?
Judy Daughtry, Wayne Smith, Larry Altman.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Drew Top. I live at 25777 Southwest Second. And as she said, I'm going to be having it on three sides of me. The pond I live on drains, I'm not sure how many acres, but at least three or four of these solar panel areas drain into the pond that my kids play in. And I don't know what the chemicals that come off, but there's no way solar panels have no film, no anything that's going to run off of them. I also have a well, and water seeps into ground, so it's going to go into my well water, whatever it is. Snow, dust, all of that is going to cover the panels. So I find it hard to believe that two to four people are going to be able to keep them cleared so that they are working there most efficiently. So there will be more, I guarantee it. And there's going to have to be people driving all over the roads for at least two or three years. So that makes our nice, quiet country road that we built our house on eight years ago not quiet anymore. Makes it like living in town, which is not why we moved out there. It's not why we built our house there. Like Kim said, it's going to destroy property values. From what I've looked into, anywhere from 30 to 40% decrease in property value. So that just destroys anybody's property ability to get equity out of their house if they need it in a situation where they need money. I know they said the panels last 25 years. Every bit of research I have done says that they replace the panels every five to 10 years with more efficient panels. So, you know, that's what, every five or 10 years, it's the same process as when it's being built. So that's not just put it in and leave. And then where did all those bad panels go? Eldon said fire, you know, you got lithium battery banks, whatever they are, those spark, they cause fires. We have bad problems with fires when it's dry. Eldon talked about farming. I, my family is big into hunting, and I know they said their, whatever, their game fences will let animals travel, but I find that really hard to believe. Because just taking out one waterway that's 200 yards completely changes everything about the way the pheasants, the quail, the deer, the everything travel, destroys all of that. I've seen that in my life. Yeah, I don't know. I think they covered everything else I wanted to say, but it's just, it's not, it's not anything that people that live there want. Thanks.
Sorry, we have a question, sir.
I have a question, Drew. A lot of the letters, and you mentioned 30 to 40% property values. Do you have any empirical data on that?
Not with me, no.
Okay, because, yeah, nobody showed any studies. I looked. My gut says, yeah, there probably would be a reduction, but I don't know how much, and I don't know for sure if it's real.
If you were looking at a, if you were looking to move out into the country, and you had two properties, one was right across the fence from a bunch of solar panels, and one was 15 miles away from them, what one would you look at?
I'm just looking for data.
I know. I'm just saying, but it's all demand, and people aren't going to want to live right next to that. So that depletes the property value.
Thank you. Shelley, are we having a problem with?
Yeah, with our timer, but I have another timer here, so.
Okay, so just so you know, the light situation is not working. Shelley has got a hand timer that she's using, so she will let you know when you get to four minutes. And we do need to try and keep people to five so we can get through everybody who's here. It'll, it just takes a minute, and then the microphone's over there, but the panel is there. There you go.
Okay. Well, my name is Judy Doherty, and I live at 1333 West Gage Road in Hallam. So on their little map that they supplied, you know, they showed you the little blue dots of all the houses, but it was primarily Lancaster County. West Gage Road is the county line. So north of that is Lancaster, but directly south is Gage. So this little box right down here, that's my house, and I'm in Gage County. And as you can see, I am going to be looking north to nothing but solar. When we moved to the country, we moved there knowing that, you know, it's a farming community. You're going to be looking at crops and, you know, them harvesting and all that. And that's, you know, enjoyable, and you, you know, you agree to look at that. We built this home, and I have floor-to-ceiling windows to look at the countryside, because it's got a great view there. I didn't move there to look at a solar farm. I didn't want to loot industrial. I didn't want to look at an industrial-looking area, and that's what this is going to look like now. He talked about, oh, we're gonna, I noticed that, that one little circle that you questioned him about was about where it would impact. Well, that's my house that he was talking about there. Yeah, that's going to impact my view. So, you know, were they going to put some kind of trees just to the north of me, and what about my view, you know, caddywhop is here, to this whole other section? A game fence? I don't think anybody would be in favor of any kind of a fence. You know, if you're going to put in a row of cedar trees or something, I would be, you know, there's nothing wrong with looking at cedar trees. You know, if they're going to put something that looked natural, you know, to block that, I would be more in line with that. This game fence, I mean, here in the, in town, you guys deal with leaves falling off of trees. We don't have that problem. You know, the leaves fall off, they go south. But what we do have is corn husk. You know, my husband and I just spent last week, we literally had two feet of corn husk all around the house, you know, and that's a fire hazard, a possum hazard. But, you know, so if you have a fence, it's going to be filled with corn husk, I guarantee it, and that's just going to look trashy. You know, that's not, nobody's going to want a fence. I mean, you think about your landfill here, you know, you've got a chain-link fence around that with a white screen. Well, that's ugly as hell, I'm sorry. I don't want to look at something like that either. Property values, I did just do a quick search, and it did say, like, within a half a mile, you could see a one and a half percent decrease in our property value. Another one said maybe 2.3, but if it was a situation where it was ag, you could see maybe 3% decrease. You know, that's not a lot, but it's still a decrease in my property value. You know, he was saying that, oh, he's, this, they've got a constitutional right to do what they want to with their property. Well, is that, you know, devaluing my property? What about, you know, my right? You know, I have a right to not have my property devalued. You know, and I don't, that's not what I moved out in the country to look at. It's definitely going to make it look very industrial. My other concern is glare. They haven't mentioned anything about glare. I'm to the south, and I'm thinking, you know, and in the winter, your sun is to the south, so these things are going to be, in my mind, pointing to the south. What kind of a glare is that going to be putting on my house and my windows? You know? And there again, is this screening going to, you know, negate that, you know, and get rid of that, or, you know, is that just?
One more minute.
You know, or is that going to be, you know, how far does the glare go? You know, and travel? So, yeah. You know, I definitely am not in favor of it. You know, it's not what I moved to the country for. Just to let you know, I didn't get my paperwork until Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And again, as being a good, you know, neighbor, I live across the road from this thing. I was never notified of a meeting in town last night. I heard about it today from a neighbor, you know. Nextera's not known for doing good town meetings in Hallum. You know, so I don't know where they publicized it or who they let know, but, you know, no, they don't do good neighbor community outreach. They just haven't.
Would you like these copies of these? Yeah, and if you want to give them to Shelley, she'll make sure we all get. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Wayne Smith, 6345 South 35th Court, Lincoln. I'm opposed to any solar project that involves tax credits, government grants, or subsidies, or have materials that, or components that come from China. It will increase the total cost of energy in the long run because you're going to still need backup for when the sun doesn't shine or when the panels are covered with snow. Climate change is a part of a UN agenda and is a fraud to get more control of the people, redistribute wealth throughout the world, and to nudge us into a one-world government. Americans have paid a steep price for buying into environmental deception and lies. Hoodwinking Americans is part of the environmentalist agenda. Environmental activist Steven Snyder said, "We have to offer up scary scenarios, make simplified dramatic statements, and make little mention of any doubts we might have. Each of us has to decide what the right balance is between being effective and being honest." Timothy Worth, former Democrat Congressman from Colorado, said, "We've got to try to ride the global warming issue. Even if the theory of global warming is wrong, we will be doing the right thing anyway in terms of economic policy and environmental policy." Professor Sonis, Ph.D., professor of atmospheric and mathematical science at the University of Wisconsin, indicated, "Global warming is due to many factors: solar activity, human activity, and ocean dynamics. When it comes to climate systems, there are a lot of things we don't understand, and this is where the atmospheric scientific community has failed. We have given the impression to people that we understand climate and we can make predictions for the next 100 years. This is not true. The proof of this is that all climate predictions that started in 2000 failed to predict the next 10 years. On the issue of the 95% of all scientists agree on global warming, the 95% is a funny number. 65% of the scientists declined to answer the question. Two-thirds of the time, the weatherman can get to, get the temperature within 3 to 5 degrees one week out. What makes us think that we can estimate the temperature within 2 degrees, 80 to 100 degrees out? Please don't approve this project. Thank you very much."
Hey, Larry Altman, Tim Spillman, Alvin Nielsen, Michelle Olson.
I'm Larry Altman. Live at 899 E. Gage Road. 33 to P. Goferay from me is one of the properties that are involved in this. I guess I'm okay with the project as far as that part goes. I would know that, that neighborhood then would be pretty peaceful, wouldn't have a bunch of people driving in and out of lanes or stuff like that. And I have some property that could be involved in this. I've not signed into it. As with my Corporation of ACDO, we are still contending with the process of hearing this debate, but I'm leaning toward it because some of my family and neighbors want to use the facilities or their ground freely to put the solar panels on. And that, I think, is a freedom of ownership of the, of the family farms in that aspect. My sister and I are still debating on this, but I think we're going to lean toward it. It will help me in my retirement age. I won't have to farm that, and I will receive some money off of it, thanks to everybody paying their taxes. But that's the way the world is, and it's a freedom of individualism that a bunch of us guys served to different forces of military, to have that freedom. So I guess I'm, I'm kind of an oddball out here, but that's what I wanted, want to introduce that. I want my neighbors to have a freedom of being able to do what they want to do with their farm ground. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Spillman.
Hello, my name is Tim Spillman. I live at 451 South 12th Road. I live in Gage County, just less than a quarter mile south of the piece that's on the east side of Highway 77. And I have a lot of concerns. One of them is the runoff. I don't know if I can show this picture on the screen or not.
Just lay it on that, lay it there, it'll take a second, but it should come up.
It is a picture of a runoff from a solar farm in Alabama into the Chattanooga River. And you can see that this is what's coming off. Of course, I have a lot of other concerns. From what I understand, most solar panels have what's called cadmium in them. Now, you have a severe hailstorm. How many of those panels are going to get broken? You know that it's going to leak down into the ground, down into the ground system, into the creeks and rivers, and some of that comes into Gage County, most of it comes into Lancaster County. And it can cause a lot of, well, tornadoes will scatter them all over, they'll be busted everywhere, there'll be cadmium leaking everywhere. I don't know what that's going to do as far as cleanup. Is it going to make everything unusable, water undrinkable for how long? How do you clean it up? And then you have the glint and glare off the panels coming on, you have panels on both sides of Highway 77 from Firth Road to Gage Road. And, and from the busiest times of day, in the morning and the afternoon, depending on which way you're driving, people are going to have flashing glints in their eyes when they're driving, 70 to 80 miles an hour. And Firth Road is a very busy intersection. People from Firth, but mostly people from Hallum use that to get on or to get home, and they cross there. And there's been several deadly accidents. I'm sure the accidents will increase along there just from the glare of the people going 70, 80 miles an hour down that road. And, you know, they say, oh, the inverter noise will be 60, 70 decibels, whatever. Yet you look online, you cannot find anything that will allow you to listen to what those inverter noises are when it downloads the electricity off the panels. You have to sign a non-disclosure agreement to listen to that. In other words, you can listen to it, but you can't share it with anybody, or you'll be sued. You know, of course, there's almost four mile, square miles that's not going to be in use. Property values will go down, obviously. And, you know, very people, few people know that cell phone reception will be decreased. Most people that live next to or within those areas have to use, get a, a special type of booster antenna, either in their house or wherever, to, to use their cell phones. And one thing I've never, didn't even realize when I was researching this, which I wasn't given much time to do, but on several spots, I, where there was research in the United States and other countries, it can raise the temperature in the solar fields and to the properties close to the solar fields up to 8 degrees. Now, if it's 100 degrees in the summertime, that makes it 105 to 108 degrees. And what about local oversight? Who's, who's, who's going to get to go in there and see if those panels are, are safe, if they're not cracked? If they're not leaking? And, yeah, local, it's not beneficial to wildlife. From what I understand, what you'll see is an increase of rats, mice, and snakes living there. Oh, boy, I want to live across the road from that. I just live a quarter mile down there. What about, what about the water use? How much water are they going to use? Is it going to affect my well, a quarter mile well? It can cost anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000 to drill a new well. I'm retired. I don't have that cut of money, you know? Can I sell my house and say, sorry, you're going to put another $50,000 in to drill it a well? You know, I mean, the cadmium alone can cause cancer, kidney and intestinal problems, and, and like somebody said, say that it has not been around long enough for anybody to know the long-term effects. And, you know, and there's other things I can go into, you know, something that's called electromagnetic hypersensitivity from people that live close to it. And cancer, boy, I sure don't want to go through it again, as you can see the top of my head.
Hey, Alvin Nielsen.
My name's Alvin Nielsen, and I live at 7545 Plum Creek Tribe. If you know Lincoln, you know I don't live out next to the proposed plan here. Let me get my phone going. First of all, I just ran onto the meeting by accident because I think the 10/11 maybe had a blurb on it, maybe Pure Nebraska had something. And as a lot of the media, they either don't give a whole lot that informs you, or they represent an unbalanced view. I did Google an article from the Lincoln Journal paper, and it has a resident who lives out by there, and I thought it was very good. Her name was Kim, and it might be the same one that testified here. But the article talks about the product or the project. So the other thing is, there's probably a lot of people would like to attend a hearing meeting, but guess what? 1:00 PM in the afternoon, except for retired people or people that work at home, it's a inconvenience. So I really think the lack of information to the public, even going back to the beginning of when this thing was started, I think there needs to be some pre-information before you get to kind of the crisis situation. I do identify with those who oppose it because of the loss of their attractive country living and their neighbors next to the solar farm. But you know, my main concern, and I've lived on this earth 82 years, most of it was in the farming community. I was a crop consultant for 25 years. And what I read about reclaiming this land after it's been used for a wind turbine or put some concrete, oh, just dig the concrete up down to three feet and you can raise crops. Guess what? When you take a road that's been traveled on, a dirt road, and you try to raise crops on it, it has destroyed the productivity of the land. We've got foreign countries buying our land, we've got wind turbines, solar farms. Urban sprawling is taking up our land. Has anyone thought down the road what your grandchildren's, great-grandchildren are going to inherit as far as production of our food? I guess we could take fungi and produce hamburger in the lab and be satisfied with So the land loss to me is not a local concern, it's a US concern especially. And you'd like to see it put up in the mountains somewhere where very few people live, you don't disrupt the productive land, but evidently that's not the realistic thing. You need the power next to the people where they live. So my main point, and I do, if you identify where I live, we had a nice golf course just south, two blocks from us. It has been totally destroyed, restructured, and apartments and houses and stuff, which is fine.
One more minute.
But anyway, it doesn't compare to probably a project like this. And I agree, there's, needs to be more research, or at least answers to questions that these people have. I thought they had very good points that I never thought about. So I appreciate the time, and I don't, I don't support the program mainly because I'd like to see the land left for producing food for our generations to come. Thank you.
Michelle Olson, Kimberly Robinson, Isaac Robinson.
Michelle passed. Michelle passed. So I'm Kimberly Robinson. I live at 767 Princeton Road. Just to be clear on where that is. Just to be clear on where that is. There we go. That's my home. I have a young family. My husband and I have been married-
It just came up on our screens. Can you point out again?
Point again.
Yes, right there.
Thank you.
Okay. Yep. Been married to my husband for about five years. I've got two stepchildren that spend half their time with us on this farm, a 12-year-old and a nine-year-old. We're also aspiring business people. We are hoping to bring agriculture, agricultural tourism to the community and to the area by establishing a flower and lavender farm. We've already spent our savings turning this property around. It was in significant disrepair. We've already started establishing our perennial flowers and our bulbs, and we have a massive order for lavender. And our long-term goal was to have you pick flower farm, and that's not going to happen based on what's been presented. And I'm asking you to advocate for us, our well-being, our family's well-being, our animals. We have chickens. We were hoping to get goats. We are going to have a whole homestead. And 100-foot setback is a joke, especially when the plan shows that there are four inverters immediately outside of that around our property. We are going to be inundated with that noise, with the EMF, with whatever runoff. It's unacceptable. And whoever is responsible for that rule of regulation should be deeply ashamed of how poorly they've advocated for our community and the residents of this county. It is, Blake, this is a dream-crushing notification. And if you notice on the map also, and once it comes back up, there wasn't a sign off the highway onto West Princeton Road, which means as I drive out of my street onto the highway to go to the hospital to work, because I have to work my ass off every day and then come home and work on a farm every day to try and make some things happen in my life, I didn't know about this. I didn't know about any communicated, community meetings. No one has come to my property. No one has talked to me. I don't trust anyone related to this project because no one has established trust. And I have a hard time trusting this whole process in general because it feels really a lot like the big corporation is coming in to screw the little guy. So, I've submitted things in print. I was going to read a whole thing to you guys, and I hope to God you've read it, and I hope you've taken it seriously and taken it into consideration that I need you to protect my family and our family's goals as residents of your community. I need you to get more than a single tree line around my property to get rid of that noise. I need those inverters moved away from my property. That is not okay. I, like, it was this wonderful dream to bring the kids out, and we're going to live in the country, and we're going to live on a farm. And yeah, you have all the different stuff. My neighbors have been very eloquent in describing their concerns, and I, yeah, I share all those concerns, that's true. But when it comes down to it, it seems like a pretty big done deal at this point. It seems like every, like you said, they came in with a very complete record. They have everything in place. They've been working on it for years. I'm a layperson that's had less than a week to really even like process emotionally, much less mentally and intellectually what's going on. I haven't had time to read all, all the hundreds of pages, and I know it's my responsibility as a citizen to read through all that, but that's not acceptable when we are not experts and that we are working full-time. We need people to help us. When I call and ask for more information, when I email and ask for information, I deserve a response from the power company. That would be nice. Didn't even get a hello. So, there's no one advocating for us, so we're a bunch of strangers in here just begging for people to recognize that we're fucked. Excuse me. I apologize for that. So, at the risk of grandstanding, I understand, I got a little upset. It's not my nature to do that. I try to be a very reasonable person.
One more minute, Kim.
And just help us out, please. That's all we need. We need someone to be looking out for us. Thank you.
Isaac Robinson.
So, that's my wife. I don't know if she mentioned, we moved into this house a year ago. We bought it and purchased it of November of last year. So, I don't know where all this communication has come from, but we haven't heard a single thing until this November, when we got that pretty awesome letter. One thing that I noticed, we were talking about noise pollution, is we have the, around the substation, we have our decibel levels around that. Everyone is failing to mention there are these inverters. Okay, these inverters, looking on their submitted plans, which I spent a lot of time online last night looking over their documents, their blueprints, their everything, there are four inverters within 250 yards of my residence. One of them is 100 yards off my south property line. These inverters are 23 feet long, they are seven feet wide, they are seven and a half feet tall, they weigh 30,000 pounds, that's 14 tons. They produce a decibel level of greater than 78 decibels. That is according to the manufacturer, that is in the specifications that they have submitted. For reference, a mobile generator produces 50 to 80 decibels. These things have a constant, they have a forced air cooling system in them that is a constant cool, forced air cooling system. These things will run day, night, 365 days a year. There's going to be a constant humming generator sound coming from these things next to my property. They're also going to have to have variable speed to cope with the different temperatures going on with these batteries. There's no way there's not batteries in these things weighing 30,000 pounds. So there's going to be batteries in that. So in a hot 100-degree day, these things are going to ramp up. That is why the manufacturer says greater than 78 decibels. So at that point, am I going to have four lawnmowers running outside my house that I'm going to be able to hear? And their attempt of screening is, according to the code, it is trees planted 25 feet apart, and there are eight foot, in their plans, they have it written out, it is eight foot tall trees at time of install. They are eight foot tall cedar trees, 25 feet apart, and then the fourth one is a two and a half foot red maple. And it's going to, and this is a screen that's going to block the view. The view that they have submitted, I don't know what game fence he's talking about, because on their blueprints, it is a six-foot tall chain link fence with one foot of three rows barbed wire on the top of it. This is in the plans, this is what they've submitted. So whatever game fence he's talking about, I failed to see that part of it. And then the land to the east of ours is not developed at this point, but we are completely wrapped. And if they want to, they have that land, so they can develop that. So I can have three sides of my entire property where I'm going to look at chain link fence and barbed wire. So walking outside, do not feel like you're in some sort of prison. I don't know how that's going to happen, and how that's not going to affect any resale value or value on my house. That's something I would really like to see. The setbacks of 100 feet of the property are just absolutely ridiculous. For reference, Odo County, which is just south, they have a setback of 500 feet right now, and they're trying to pass another 600, trying to pass it to 1,000 feet setbacks. They also have up their trees to six trees per 100 feet, not four, six trees per 100 feet to get full coverage. York County has set it to a half a mile of setback. Illinois State has moved it, is trying to pass 500 feet because they're at 150 feet just like we are, and they're trying, in their state house, they're trying to move it to 500 feet. Yeah, as mentioned, the Salt Creek Solar Plant, they have 450 feet setbacks. Why is this project so much different? Why do we get 100 feet and they get 450 feet? Is it because we're too blue collar and that upstairs is not? Do we not contribute enough to UNL? I don't know. And if these standards are so widely accepted across the nation, then how come it's state after state and everyone is trying to move these standards farther? Why is, why are we in Lancaster County 100 feet? Yeah, so basically, how would you feel if you go home and your neighbor, you go home tonight, your neighbor, two neighbors threw up six-foot fences, barbed wire on top, you got a generator, and you get some bushes, and you get told, yeah, you're fine, just deal with it? So the other thing that is a concern is a fire, because if you're going to have all these things out there in the field, you have batteries, everyone has seen what a Tesla looks like when it blows up, and it's running lithium batteries, you can't put the fire out. Lancaster County or Lincoln County Fire Department went and assessed it, they said there's not a problem. Can Hallam's Fire Department handle it? Can Firth, can the small-town fire departments actually handle a large-scale fire like this? There's like one axis in, one axis out, it's going to run rampant through this field full of grass. Who's going to stop that? How is that going to not catch all the houses on fire in the area? The small, little community fire departments can't handle this size of, this workload. It's going to jump from field to field to field, and then they're just going to, you know, pack up their bags and walk away. So basically, I just want you guys to, this is a Florida-based company that is moving up here because Florida's made more restrictions down there. So advocate for Nebraska residents who go to work and work our asses off, and, you know, we're just trying to do our best we can, live our best life. And you know what? Maybe the slogan is right, where Nebraska's not poor everybody.
She just read the names. I don't know who's who, so.
Yeah. It's Dave DeBoer, it's here? No? Okay, Mike Summers, that'd be you.
My name's Mike Summers. I live at 500 West Princeton Road. I moved out into the country 37 years ago. I used to live in the city. I worked in the city, never come back to this city. I chose that life out there, away from the city. Everybody's pretty much said what I was going to say. You know, we got a letter in the mail the day before Thanksgiving. You couldn't get a hold of anybody or nothing. I have contacted a real estate agent here in Lincoln, and I also contacted a company that sells farm ground, a big company. I asked them what I could get for my property to sell out, but they told me, after I told them solar panels were coming across the road, and it's a done deal, you can't fool me. Because I've worked construction my whole life here in Lincoln, and when there's a zoning change sign that all of a sudden just appears out of nowhere in the ditch, in the weeds that you can't even see across from my road, I went around the neighborhood. I didn't find anyone else. So the project starts with, across from my property. Yes, people have the right to do with whatever they want with their property. I agree with that. But when you go to sell and there's this farm across the road, we don't have no money. I've put my life savings in that place, and now it's worthless, because once that solar farm goes in, I can't sell it. The big company said so, and RE/MAX also said so, that I go down to 0.001% to sell my property. I'm up in age now. You know, I've been out there for 37 years. Kim Topp was the agent that I bought the property from. I live across, what, quarter mile from their son. Nobody's ever done study on the migration route, because there's millions of Canadian and white geese that come to the pond that sits over by my neighbor. We have pictures over the years of big old funnels of animals coming in. They've been on my property, there's probably been, you know, probably 500,000, you know? You're going to screw with the migration route and doing all this stuff out of who knows what, trying to get it through crookedly. I've heard over the years that there was somebody that accepted money, and he just confirmed there was dirty money. I don't care about funny money. That's why 87% of all people here in the United States don't trust their government right now. And that's why, because stuff's done crookedly behind our backs. You know, I've got a school bus route that goes up and down West Princeton Road every day. I've been out there when they did the construction on the hydrogen plant. I had big trucks coming down all times of the day. I had my house broken in by one of the workers. That's why my whole property is censored and got cameras on it. That way I can protect my wife that's home alone. You know, that, you know, I think this is far-fetched. It's all been done on the whim of one week, this meeting, to us, and they did it on a holiday. That way you couldn't get a hold of anybody. Will I be pursuing a lawyer? Yes, because I will be suing this company. I've also heard that all the powers come into Lincoln.
One more minute.
You know, to furnish power to Google. I've talked to, I know a lot of state employees, I know a lot of architects. I talked to a guy that's architect. Their firm's drawing up two more big buildings for Google. You know, they've got to supply the power somewhere, and we're the guinea pigs. That's all I got to say.
Ben Pomaizel, 26805 Southwest 29th. And my property is right there. So, I double and triple everything that's been said today. Obviously, it's very emotional, you know, to a lot of people because it's our homes. Six years ago, we moved out to the country because I wanted the country lifestyle. 24 years in law enforcement, still going. I deal with people every day. Sometimes it's nice to go out and not have to deal with anybody, right? My biggest concerns are the fire that's been brought up multiple times because we've had grass fires that now they won't be able to contain. But right off of my property here, they're talking about putting in a battery array, or I think they say a BES. Is that correct? A BES, a battery array is what you, where they store the four hours of energy? Well, that's supposed to be right out my driveway, and then they're going to want to put a high, high-energy line that looks like a coordinate of the plan kind of cuts through the corner of my property. I don't know if they're trying to skirt it, but I got three kids at home, you know? A bunch of huge batteries that are 100 feet away from my house, that's a big concern to me. I know, I know that my situation's not special. There's a lot of people here that have the same concerns, but if I could ask you guys to ask the questions, you know, and verify that this is going to be safe for me and my family, because if that grass fire catches 100 feet away from my house and the fire department can't even get to it because of the solar panels, we're engulfed before we have a chance to fight, okay? Also, Nextera, if you look them up, I mean, they're a billion-dollar company. So, yeah, they send in polished people that are presented to boards all across the country to sell you on their product. And they do a good job, but that's because they get paid to do so. And they come here and they sell this product that, we're going to help you out, we're going to give the county a bunch of money. You're all going to be successful because we're going to build this. But in all reality, we know that they're looking for their investors. They're going to make a lot of money from this project. That's why it's so big. That's why, I mean, while I was reading in the paper, the next largest plant here in our solar farm here in Nebraska is like 500 acres. This is like four times that. I mean, it's insane how huge it is. And to my, to my little knowledge of this, it's just because they can. And the whole setback situation and all that other stuff, they found a place that was ripe, right there next to the power plant so they can connect right into the grid. I can see logically why they want to do it, but it's just, in my opinion, it's too much. I echo all the complaints that we've already had. I ask you to vote no on this. Thank you.
Camilla Slosson, and J.C. Ober. I don't think I'm pronouncing that right. And Tori Leniman are next.
Hi, this is Short. This is good, my level. I'm going to take a deep breath first. I would also, though, ask-
You do name and address quick.
Yes, I'm sorry. Kamila Slosson, and we're at 25235 Southwest 29th Street in Hallam, Martell, Hallam, we're kind of directionally both. I would like to ask for a couple extra minutes. I'm going to be respectful of time, but I know that we did have some people talking, and then we had a few shorter on our side, so I will try to wrap up by five minutes, but I would really like to get through. I think you'll understand why there's a couple pretty important things. So I will skip over some of the things that have already been said that the people that are involved in this project and have signed on. There's three of them who live in the area. Everyone else is outside of the area. It's being painted by a lot of sightline studies and things in the area that things in the area are, there's not a lot of homes. there's not a lot of homes, right? So you'll see, there's like forty pictures submitted. I almost take the second here, we'll see. I have four of them in here. I'll just show two of them for time's sake. But these are the sightline photos that you'll see.
You flip them? Oh, other way. There we go. Thank you.
All of them look like this. If you were to just turn around, you would see houses in the area. So the fact that they tried to, you know, paint these pictures that there's very little in the area, there's, there's actually a lot more. And I think even some of the maps don't, don't do things justice. I have a lot of information that I'm happy to pass off to you guys as far as, you know, sound and all those types of things that we quite frankly fought some of the same stuff when we were fighting the wind turbines. And this now has just faded away because the setbacks and things like that. Okay, we can't do wind turbines. So we have these property owners who are willing to sign on. So now we're just gonna move it to solar. Quite frankly, they don't care. They don't care about risks. They don't care about our health. It's just, we have these landowners, we have this perfect storm. We have Monolith Materials who's willing to also take, you know, some of the power, you know, just a whole, a whole system basically that they can connect, right? So it's a perfect storm. So we're gonna figure out how to make this puzzle fit, whether this puzzle is good or not. Which is where we need you guys to come in and really hear what we have to say and do your homework and be voices of reason. And if the reason, if it boiled down to it, everyone's reason, we all really could get to that, that you know what, people live out here, but this is actually good and this is what's best, then that's what we'd get to. But I think if you guys do your research, you will see and you will find that that is not the case in, in any sense of the word. We have so many people in our community that couldn't be here today. You already heard about the letters, you already heard about all that. But also, there's people who have kids. My husband would have loved to be here. He had to get our kids off the bus. Our neighbors, they both work. There's so many people that would have liked to be here today. In referencing the sound very quickly, first of all, the, the regulations for wind energy, they're so much lower. I think it's forty-two and fifty for participating, non-participating. Why are we fifty and sixty for something that should in theory be quieter? Why, why are we having that? But also, I need you guys to understand kind of this picture of, of where we're at out there. So, I'll try to get this facing the correct direction here. Maybe I'll have to turn it. So our home is right up here. And then I will show you another map where we have some crop ground, and I'll get to why that's important in a second. But we have Sheldon Power Station and we have Monolith here. So as you start to factor in the, the proposed plan, you can't see all of it, but it's right in this area. So when you start to take the sounds of all of these areas and you combine the sound together, you're not just fighting one amount of sound coming from one area. And everything in the country, I don't care if there's trees, I don't care if it's not, it's wide open spaces. It's cutting across. So we, directly behind us, this is a view off our back deck here. So this is Monolith, and this is Sheldon, right here. And they're on the opposite end of our section. And like I say, over, you know, kind of in, in this southern area is where we then would have the, this solar farm. And it's surrounding everyone out there. You combine those noises and it's really just truly unacceptable. Same thing, this is our neighbors right down the way. So they've got both of them right there. We hear everything. We hear their loud speakers, we hear all of it. We know what construction sounds like. We've been living in a construction zone as they've constructed all of this. It's not empty farm ground. There's so many things going on around us. I know time is starting to dwindle, so I'll show a couple other things. This is a map created by one of our neighbors out there putting in his great time and work. You can't see it as well on here, it doesn't highlight. But, you know, I'll leave this with you guys if you'd like to have it. All of these dots and everything in here are homes. It's a way bigger picture of amount of homes that are out there than what's being painted by scattered acreages. That doesn't paint the picture of what life is like out there. As was just previously talked about, this is where a huge part of the issue is. So-
That is five minutes.
Okay, I'll wrap up quickly here. Our crop ground right here is directly next to the substation and the lithium storage that they want to push through in this project. So the fire risk, if you're gonna look into anything, I would skip how bad are the solar panels. I would look into the fire risk and how unequipped everyone is to put that out and look up what a thermal runaway is and see if we're prepared to handle that. And then lastly, we have been contacted for purchase and lease of our land multiple, multiple times since before even the wind was brought in. And everyone along Pella, where they're painting that this proposed corridor of transmission lines is going, everyone is against that. And you'll see that in a letter too, also written. So I'm not sure where they think this proposed power would be going, but everyone is against it. So thank you guys for your time. And do you guys want, I'm happy to leave you-
I could take those.
Yeah, whatever you have, give to Shelley and that way it gets entered in the record.
Perfect. Yep. And this is the one that I was saying of the owners that are also next to our ground that are all with the corridors.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, J.C. And then Tori. Is there a J.C. that wants to speak? Okay. Tori. And then Oldemeyer family?
Is J.C. not here? Is that what you said?
Yeah, so go ahead.
I guess I'm, I'm up. And I apologize. I feel like I was rude. I was back there click-clacking away on my computer because I, as my neighbors, got this letter only days ago and have had not had time to do any sort of research and writing. So I did pull something together that I will now write to you after listening to all of my neighbors. Sorry. Tori Lineman, 26969 Homestead Expressway. I live in, on one of those blue dots you saw on the map earlier, pretty much right in the middle. And I was not contacted by anyone. Did not know about the meeting last night until we got here today. And the first I heard of this was just a couple of days ago by the letter. So I did rearrange things because it's so important to me. I rearranged my whole schedule to make sure that I could be here today, to be in front of you and as my neighbors try and express our serious concerns. So thank you for allowing me to speak today. I have several concerns regarding the project, including the property value, health, preservation of rural aesthetics, fire, and others. However, I believe my neighbors have already highlighted these and some done so passionately that they evoked applause. I am here to express my serious concern about the proposed solar farm around my ranch, focusing specifically on the environmental impact it would have in our area. And the only reason I'm specifically focusing on that is because I believe everyone else focused on the other points. I share their concerns. I would like to inquire if the environmental study that was conducted on the proposed project took into consideration the potential that, the potential to result in eagle take. The Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act protects bald and golden eagles and defines take as pursue, shoot, shoot at, poison, wound, kill, capture, trap, collect, molest, or disturb. Regulations define disturb as to agitate or bother a bald eagle, golden eagle, or degree or cause or its nest based on scientific information available. Inquiry in, to the eagle, injury to the eagle, or a decrease in its productivity by substantially interfering with, interfering with its normal feeding or shelter behavior. That's the definition. I believe it is crucial to ensure that all regulatory requirements are met and a thorough environmental impact assessment is essential for making an informed decision. While I believe the pursuit of renewable energy is important, the environmental impact appears to be seriously negative, specifically highlighting the president, the presence of bald eagles in this area. I have frequently observed these majestic federally protected creatures often. Just last month, we took a video of two bald eagles resting on the pond behind my house. The bald eagle is a symbol of our nation's heritage and a, and a species protected under the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act and requires careful consideration in any development project. The installation of a large-scale solar farm possesses significant risk to these and other local wildlife. The solar power towers and panels can create several hazards for birds. Birds often are attracted to the shiny surfaces of the solar panels, mistaking them for bodies of water, much like the pond behind my house. And birds are often attracted to them and by mistaking them, they can, that can lead to a fatal collision as they attempt to dive into what they believe is water. Moreover, solar, solar power towers concentrate sunlight and intense beams that can reach temperatures, temperatures of up to a thousand degrees Fahrenheit. These causing severe burns or even incineration to birds that fly too close. This is a phenomenon commonly referred to as streamers by plant staff due to the sight of birds emoliating mid-flight.
One more minute.
Habitat disruption is another significant concern. The content, the construction and presence of a solar farm can fragment local ecosystems displacing native species and altering my, migration routes. In summary, while the pursuit of renewable energy is important, the proposed solar farm's location near my ranch poses substantial environmental risks. Presence of bald eagles and local wildlife, coupled with the hazards posed by solar power installations, necessitates a more thorough review and consideration of alternative sites. The protection, the protection of our natural habitat and the preservation of our local ecosystems must remain a priority. Because of the serious negative impact, the National Audubon Society remains opposed to the construction of concentrated solar towers and solar farms. Thank you for your time.
Hey, Oldemeyer, Amanda Shaw, and Craig Shaw.
Artie, hello. My name is Daniel Oldemeyer of 24501 South 38th Street, First Nebraska. I'm just gonna start off by saying, when was the last time you guys enjoyed a sustainably-produced, affordable meal at home? I just think about, I'm gonna guess maybe at lunch this morning. Like I said, my name's Daniel Oldemeyer. I'm a fifth-generation farmer from the First Nebraska area. Our family farm was homesteaded in 1883. And that's something we take great pride in. And I'm just here to express some numerous concerns that we have regarding the heritage of our farm and just the future for future generations of our farm, that the impact of this solar farm will have on that. As a young farmer myself, it's what I do. This is my livelihood. It's what our family's done for five generations, like I've said. It's something that I hope my future kids will be able to enjoy. And when we see projects like this coming into our area, you know, it raises concern. Will this continue to expand on the farm ground and reduce the chances that my kids will have to farm in the future? That's just something that we're concerned about. I'm not sure if you guys know this statistic, but approximately two thousand acres of farm ground per day in the United States is lost, whether that be due to urban sprawl, just whatever developments that are encroaching on that. And when we see a two thousand-plus acre solar farm coming into our area, that's basically one hundred, or one three-hundred-and-sixty-fifth of our nation's total farmland lost, you know, just in this one project. So in my, in my mind, in the scope of the entire country, that's a pretty big deal. I'm not sure if you guys know this statistic either. The average size of farm in Nebraska is nine-hundred-and-seventy-one acres. A two-thousand-acre solar farm coming in is gonna put out basically one and three-quarters farmers in this area. That means basically two less farmers to purchase seed from the local dealer, to produce, or to purchase fertilizer from the local co-op, to buy equipment, and to sell grain. And all of that funnels back to the local communities. I know this company's talked about how they're gonna provide for the community, they're gonna be there for us. But I just encourage you guys all to think about the local farmer and how everything that they do already funnels back to the local community. Another thing that I looked up, just based on some numbers that the company has provided about solar panels, it's gonna take roughly twenty-seven acres of solar panels to produce the same amount of electricity that one wind generator produces. I just find that a pretty shocking statistic. That's twenty-seven acres wiped out of production. I'm not saying that I'm a fan of, of wind turbines either. At least you can farm under them. One other thing that I find intriguing, they always wanna come out into the rural areas and put in solar panels, but why don't we see them on rooftops of houses or buildings here in Lincoln? Why haven't these companies looked into alternatives such as those versus removing productive farmland from what us farmers intend it to be? Another concern I have, also related to farming, as many of you know, our equipment is big and it takes a lot of room to get it down these roads. I don't have a map with me here, but we travel Princeton and Pella roads very frequently when moving between farms. And when we're faced with construction traffic, it is a big deal for us. You know, it takes us extra time and we're already up against the time clock-
One more minute.
-to slow down and move over for this construction equipment. It's a big deal. Also with roads, visibility. I know setbacks have been mentioned. You guys, I'm sure if you've traveled country roads, when there's corn right up to the county intersections, it makes it really hard for people to see. And us, as farmers, we know that. But when there's solar panels there, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, that's also gonna cause lots of visibility concerns for citizens. So I guess in conclusion, I just hope that my time here will have some sort of an impact on the impact of this. And remember that the impact of the approval of this zoning action will have, or remember that the impact of this zoning action, what the impact will have on that delicious meal that you guys enjoy three times a day. So I just thank you guys for your time. And I'd love to answer any questions that you guys would have concerning the agricultural impact that this could have.
Thank you. Hey, Amanda Shaw, Craig Shaw. Then Margaret Verna.
Hi, Craig Shaw, 28100 Southwest 14th. I don't have the map in front of me. I didn't have time. I didn't research well enough. I think I heard about how big the scale of this was about a week ago for my community. I just moved out there about five months ago and already have the community reaching out. I'm not gonna be able to say a whole lot more than you guys have already seen today. I can already see it draining on you. It's a tough decision you guys have to make today. All I can do is ask you to think about the community. Think about the people who are speaking today. Think about putting yourself in our shoes as a Nebraskan and not in the profit place of a company from Florida. So, again, I'm not gonna say a whole bunch more that you haven't heard. I'm not gonna wear you out. I know you guys are ready to go home. But think about your Nebraskans. Don't think about the profit for a company who shared, what, eighty million dollars out of Florida? We don't see that. We just feel the impact. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna do, we'll have you speak and then we'll take a quick break so we can kind of figure out where we're at with the number of testifiers. Just so you know, we will stay here as long as it takes. So everybody has a chance to be heard. But we've been going for two hours, so we'll let you speak, then we'll take a quick break. So if anybody needs something to drink or bathroom break, we can do that. So go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Margaret Verna, 1700 J Street, apartment 605. Just some quick questions. When, when that twenty-five or thirty-year period is up, does it take another six-hundred million or so to refurbish what's there? And earlier, I think it was in the presentation about the plant that, or installation, that, that silicon is a major ingredient in these solar collectors, which is main element in sand, is, so I need confirmation on that one way or another. Third question is hiding somewhere. Oh, well. It's gone. So there we are. So, there we are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, like, let's do five minutes, so everybody can take a break, and we can get back. But I-
Tony here?
Tony? Okay.
No, Tony. Dwayne? John? John Paul?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm John Paul Belcher, and I live at 9,000 South First Street, and I don't know if this is gonna be for Phase Two, I had no idea there was gonna be a Phase One. So, they don't tell you anything. And they're gonna spend 60 million, $61 million to lease this land, divided by 30, that's over $2 million a year. My land's worth $3 or $4 million. So it's ridiculous. They're like stealing this land. I don't know how they're even, how it's got this far. I had no idea that this is final vote today, is that true? Is that a final vote today?
So, I will, normally we don't answer questions, but just to clarify-
Because there's been no meeting, there's been no nothing.
Yeah, no, let me just really quickly, I will clarify, it is final action of the Planning Commission-
You're ruining people, wait.
Hold on.
You're ruining people's dreams.
Sorry, hold on, no.
The land that they worked hard for.
Sir, could you please let me, what I was going to say is it is the action of the Planning Commission about the zoning decision. Then, depending on how that goes, it is appealed potentially to the county board. So it is not any, in any way, shape, or form, final today.
You mean 20, wait, 2,400 acres at $2 million a year? It's a joke! That's stealing land! You couldn't even buy it for that! There's no way. I have a land down the street that's worth $3 or $4 million. Why don't they buy the land? You know why? They're stealing it so they can be near the transmission. That's all they're doing, is stealing this land for nothing. $2 million a year? What a joke! That is stealing. Right out to South First Street, see all the empty farmlands that's gonna be gone? It's gonna be gone! You'll have to live with it. Ask people in Iowa, in Indiana, North Carolina about these solar farms. That's all I'm gonna say. It's up to you guys. Five feet from me, there's gonna be a solar farm, as far as you can see, across the street from me, 160 acres. I have horses, chickens, everything. It's been a dream come true for me. And it's, my neighbor just bought a $700,000 house across the street, now he's gonna have solar panels right up to his ass. Tell him about that. He just moved here from Washington DC without a warning, he didn't even know about it. Where's he? Because he didn't know about it! Hey, guys, if you vote for this, it's on you guys. That's all I gotta say. It's un-American, is what it is. But maybe it's not un-American, because corporates fuck people all the time. That's what's happening here.
Okay, we have two more people on the list here, Marilyn McNob and Ken Winston. And I don't know, I don't know if Ken is here. Is Marilyn here?
I'm here, but I didn't plan to speak.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's all I have, that signed in to testify. Oh, I have one more, I'm sorry. David Kessinger.
David?
There, David.
Alright, is there anyone here who did not sign in who wishes to speak?
I signed in.
Okay.
Oh, Derek, I'm sorry. I said David.
Yeah, we'll get to him next, thanks.
My name's Derek Kachwar, I'm at 2223 West Princeton Road. I grew up on a farm and ranch in western Nebraska. I work in Lincoln, and I got lucky enough to buy land eight years ago and move out to what's now gonna be touching this solar farm. I have, you know, I'm in opposition of this. I've learned more about this today from my wonderful neighbors that have been speaking than I have been allowed time to research this thing. I received my letter on Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and I guess as the gentleman from next era spoke, that he had been working on this project for years. I guess for a project of this magnitude, I guess I feel like we deserve more than a week for the people that are gonna be the most impacted by this. Especially when supporting documents for this project were still being uploaded yesterday afternoon. I guess most of the things, property, value, all those concerns, I didn't move out there for this. But one thing that I did wanna pop up, again, Kami brought up this map, I created this map, I want you to be aware of how populated this area really is. So every one of those pink dots is a house, okay? So I don't know who have this documentation, but I'd like you to see this one. Okay, this is a lot of people affected. This is up to one mile outside of it, within it, and one mile outside of it, okay? You know?
Can you put it on the screen, sir, so that we can-
I don't know if it'll all fit.
It may not all fit, we can zoom in and out, but that way everybody has a chance to see it, and people who are watching-
So there's the-
Online.
There's the solar farms, right? Okay? Going to the northwest. You know, outside of, you know, we got Princeton up to the top, that's within a mile. You know, I appreciate George's map that he showed up earlier, but like the one lady said, it didn't extend to the south. I mean, the north end of Cortland is within a mile of this. You know, there's Hollum, okay? That's 87 people, 87 houses, you know, affected. Granted, there's a few houses with inside of this that are obviously participants of it, and unfortunately, a lot of people that are being completely surrounded by it. I guess every, most of the people here have already made the comment of what I wanted to make, being the last one up here, right? So, but I just feel that you kinda, I wasn't gonna speak, but you kinda hit on this final action, right? I didn't know what all that meant, I thought this was final. So, as something that's this magnitude, that we've had little time to do this, I don't know what you're able to do if you're just gonna, if this is just gonna move forward, can I ask that you postpone the final action until we get our questions organized and answered? That's what I'd like to do, because I haven't seen a sign, I haven't known anything about this. So, I guess that's all I have to say, and I hope you make the right decisions.
Do you wanna, can you leave that map for Shelley?
Yeah, yeah, sorry about that. The other thing was, we're starting to see information come in. I don't know what this is, I haven't had enough time, I haven't had enough time to even research this to be able to put my name to it yet. But this is a header that's called the Cass County Solar Project, Cass County Board of Commissioners, Findings of Facts and Resolution. And when you go through this, there's a lot of negative impacts what solar has to provide. I'd like to, I'd like to throw it out there, but, or give that to you, because there's a lot of negative impacts that this includes in it. But again, I haven't had enough time to research it, and I'd like you to have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we had one more person who hadn't signed in but wishes to speak, so we'll, go ahead and have you come forward.
My name is Doug Reeve, I live at 2260 West Pella Road, and, let's see, which is right here, our house is right here. So we're gonna have the solar farm here, and the batteries over here. All of this drains into this lake, which supports fish, wildlife, everything else. They were talking about their animal fences, they're basically deer fences. We have a deer path that goes right through here, around here, and back. They will no longer be able to do that. That fence they're talking about letting wildlife through is meant to stop deer from getting through. Aside from that, some of the things I've heard today, I wasn't gonna speak, but I just, some of the things I heard. I have, I'm a builder, I teach architecture, I understand solar, I understand green, I'm not against green. I do know that solar panels have a very adverse effect on farmland over time, they do leach into it. There's a study in Italy, when they pulled them up, it left striped land, and those stripes would no longer support any kind of farm, any kind of farming whatsoever. It's good for the environment in some cases, like out in Scotts Bluff, when it was in an area that could not be farmed. But then we look at what happened out there as well. We had a hailstorm that completely destroyed it. What happens when that happens? And there is cadmium, there is silver, and there is lead in these, it's trace amounts, but when you have 2,000 acres of trace amounts- It's trace amounts, but when you have two thousand acres of trace amounts, it adds up. And it will harm the wildlife. It will harm the area, and we will not be able to farm it ever again. I only moved in there in April, and I will tell you, there is no way we would move in there if we'd known this was coming. No way whatsoever. Right? That's just, and I'm not even a NIMBY person, I'm not a "not in my backyard" person, but when you're, when you're gonna damage this kind of fertile land, we just dug areas up that can't even be used as soil for compaction because it is too good a farmland. And now they're gonna put that on top of it. So, that's all I had to say. All right, thank you. Oh, wait. Eastern Dead Cedars is, fillers are horrible, they're an invasive species, they kill everything around it. The last thing they should be planting is more of those. Use some blue spruce, elms, something that's not gonna destroy the land. All right, thank you.
All right, I'll ask one more time if there's anybody else here who wishes to speak. If not, we will then move on to staff questions, and then we will have applicant rebuttals.
I believe Chris Schroeder with the Health Department was also gonna come up as well.
That would be good. Awesome. All right, I think we have a long list of questions. Who would like to start?
I guess I'll start with one, because it's right on the top of my head. There were concerns about the assurity not being required right away. Can you just go over that one more time and explain why we are not requiring an assurity immediately?
Sure. Let me find the regulations here. So, the, the regulations state, "At the expense of the permittee, a cost estimate for the decommissioning of the solar facility and any estimated resale and salvage value shall be prepared." And that's updated every five years, and it, if it changes over time, they would have to provide assurity, and then there's a fifteen-year timeframe, which I believe that's in the conditions of approval as well, so.
I'll follow up on that. What happens if there is a tornado or a major hailstorm and it renders the fields not worth what you're estimating?
Insofar as a disaster destroying the solar? Yeah, I might have to ask for help on that question. I don't know if the regulations cover that.
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department. Well, first, you'd have the same impact you would have on other property that's damaged in a, some kind of a natural disaster. So are you looking to have other assistance to cover that? But part of it is, the calculation that was done, and the applicant can address this, was on the salvage value of a panel taken to a station. So presumably, you have seven-hundred-thousand panels out here, many of them are damaged, many some of them are missing, but you would still have the salvage value from those. The salvage value was not necessarily refurbishing them and selling them, it was their salvage value, which currently is way above the cost it takes you to remove them all from the site. So I, I think you'd have to get to a point that, was it such a vast amount that most of them are missing or something like that, and in which case you're probably dealing with a fairly significant natural disaster. And that is not a component that we have people in any application, whether it be a chicken farm or a business, explain and have to justify what happens to them if there's a natural disaster.
All right, Mr. Green?
George, I just want to reaffirm for the, the citizens here today that the, the announcement that they got came from the Planning Department. It did not come from Nextera. And that we have a right, or a responsibility to put something out two weeks ahead.
Yes, that's correct. There were two-hundred-and-twenty-eight letters that were mailed out on Friday, November twenty-second.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, go ahead, Dave.
So, I think this is based off of Commissioner Campbell's question earlier. So there was a hundred-feet setback, but the prior was two-fifty. When was the last time we evaluated changing setbacks for certain projects? And are there any conditions on, I would say, the type of asset that's put in an area? And the variability of setbacks, right? So if it's a solar panel or battery, are there conditions to allow certain setbacks based off the asset that's placed?
Sure. So to be clear, the, the required setbacks in the special permit criteria have not changed since the regulations were established about four years ago. What happened as far as that additional setback with the prior project was an additional condition placed upon it by the County Board.
Because the regulations were established by Lancaster County Board of Commissioners in July of 2020.
And to clarify, it doesn't matter if it's a solar panel, a battery, a whatever, it's the same setback no matter what?
Correct, the facility, yes.
And, but, but it was, right, and it was a condition, so there's an opportunity to offer that condition as part of this project.
Yes, I mean, with any application, there's the potential for additional conditions that the commission could place on an item.
And the setbacks from adjacent property, it doesn't note that it's a-
It's non-participating.
Non, but it has, is that a, a place where people live, or is it just from a property line?
No, it's, it's, the fact that they're, they are not participating in the project, that's what sets that two-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback. Somebody's participating in it, it's a lesser setback.
It's actually, it's a-
Well, it's actually a hundred for this particular-
Yeah, it's a one-hundred-foot setback for non-participating property with a dwelling, and a fifty-foot setback for non-participating property without a dwelling. And then for participating properties, with or without a dwelling, there is no setback if they're participating.
And fifty feet on a roadway?
Since Chris, since you're up here, how about you talk about the health impacts that we have researched, or you have researched, or someone in the Health Department has researched about solar, and the ingredients in solar, and leaching into the ground, et cetera?
Well, intact solar panels typically do not present a public health risk, you know, unless they're damaged by fire or severe weather events. And that's, that's the research that we, that we've seen.
Some of the other questions that has been brought up is the fire, and that, the fire, did we have a report or result? I can't remember from what I read, on if they were prepared for this, will be in the next two years when this is in place.
So, not for this specific application, but previously, Lincoln Fire and Rescue looked at the general question of fires as it pertains to solar, and the, the conclusion was that there was not any exceptional or unusual risk to the area from fires. That was the determination from before.
I have an add-on question. So, one, in the event there is, where's the responsibility held? And I think, two, you mentioned, I think, an emergency plan that was provided, and I don't know if that would explain a bit more of how they would support that situation?
Yeah, the Emergency Action Plan was one of the several documents that is not required by the county regulations that the applicant did provide, and, and they can maybe speak further to that. There would be, I believe it's Hallam and Cortland Fire Districts would be the rural fire districts that would be involved.
Were they engaged at all with this proposal?
They, they were included in our electronic review, they, we did not get any comments from them.
Can you speak, in talking about the health impacts, about the sound levels? We've had, we had several comments about sound, and cumulative sound.
Sure. Well, the, the only applicable noise limit is within the special permit conditions, and that's for the private substations. There isn't a county-wide noise ordinance or noise code.
I'm sure the Health Department is concerned with people and not birds, but were there any studies, someone mentioned the environmental impact on eagles, which are a protected species? Also, the heat that's generated from the fields could harm the birds, the wildlife, and maybe the environment in general. Was there any consideration on the heat, or? And then another testifier mentioned that migrating birds or waterfowl could mistake them for, for water and fly into them.
Yeah, we didn't focus on the animal impacts, and you're speaking to the, the urban heat island effect. I mean, I didn't see any definitive data on that. I mean, we'd, we'd welcome people to submit scientific, peer-reviewed studies, articles, research.
Mm-hmm.
But as far as the, you know, the endangered species, that's, that's out of our area of expertise, impact on animals.
Yeah, it was noted in the staff report on the bottom of page three, number twelve, that there was a study, or information from Columbia University that was previously looked at, that analyzed up to eighteen months of data, and that showed the solar ray was completely cooled at night, and there wasn't a heat island effect.
I will ask the applicant as well. There was several comments about safety with roads in terms of glare. Is there a glare issue? Do they absorb, I just don't know. Do you know? Yeah, I'll ask the applicant, but I thought I would just-
I'm gonna piggyback on the roads. So, when we talk about the plan that they have to work with our county on for construction, what is then the plan? It was brought up that every five years, a maintenance concept, or what has to happen after it's all into place? What, what agreement do they have with the county on the roads?
Generally, our agreements last for three years. At that time, then we renew them, or we'll look at them again. In this case, if it takes them ten years to build it, we will keep renewing a road agreement until the project is done. At that point, we can, continually every few years, we do road counts, we do traffic counts on roads. We will keep track of that to see what kind of impact it happens at that time. And if we need to continue this on, we'll definitely do that.
And while you're up, line of sight on corners, if these things tilted up and are fifteen feet tall, do you can take that into consideration?
That's a, kinda beyond my, my expertise, so I really can't say about that. That'd be something that, that I could definitely direct to our right-of-way department and see what they have. There are sight, there are sight distance requirements as far as even, not just these, but if you have trees, if you have other things on there, you must be able to see around a sight distance. So that would be something, once this comes forward, we would look at. You know, if you have to stay a hundred feet off, that shouldn't necessarily be an issue. You know, if you're on top of a hill, something like that, that again would be something we would, we would have to look at.
On the discussion that was happening at the Alabama site with the sediment runoff and that issue, what do we have in place in Lancaster County to have, with either a follow-up, or who, how do we regulate sites such as this for runoff and effect of the adjacency?
Would that be a question for planning or the county engineer for site runoff?
It might be a county engineer.
Or building and safety?
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department. So as part of the application requirements is an erosion control plan that is reviewed by, in this case, two different NRDs, because it falls in two different jurisdictions.
Got it. Thank you. That's on page four, number C, by the way.
I knew, I seen it. I don't know if you've seen it before. Sorry about that.
No, it's okay, it's, there's a, it's a-
Yeah, and, and the NRD then would be the enforcing agent if anything happened in the future. Okay.
And that, that concerns erosion, but if there's chemicals involved that goes along with the water flow, that would be a whole different matter.
Right, the Alabama one was about sediment of-
Sediment.
-soil and erosion, and, and not meeting the environmental requirements of that area. So I just wanted to clarify who our governing body is to, that will watch that in the future. Analyze the plan to begin with, and then watch it in the future.
Additional questions for staff?
That's all I wrote down.
All right, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
All of you. All right, at this time, applicant rebuttal.
I think it was good afternoon earlier, maybe good evening now. Madam Chair, Commissioners, again, David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, six-twenty-five South Fourteenth Street in Lincoln.
And Matthew Jones, seven-hundred Universe Boulevard, Juneau Beach, Florida.
Do you want us, we're happy to take your questions, we're happy to-
I saw you taking notes, so if you could go through and respond to comments in the public testimony, I think all of us would appreciate that, and then we will also ask questions maybe at the end, but that's-
Okay, very good, thank you. Let's see, I'll just kinda go in the order that I wrote these down. I apologize if that's not well-organized, but hopefully it'll work. There was some talk about additional setbacks in the project near Waverly. That larger setback was from community unit plan neighborhoods, so not individual homes, but in that part of the county, as you all know better than I, there are a number of those community unit plan, kind of little subdivision, rural acreage subdivision neighborhoods. And so that was, that was what that additional setback addressed. A number of people who lived in those neighborhoods had concerns, and so that was something that the developer and ultimately the County Board did. So I just, I wanna make that point. Decommissioning. Commissioner, I think you in particular asked about tornadoes and, and natural disasters and things like that. These projects are insured, like any massive investment you would make, or any investment you make. And the glass in a solar panel is safety glass, like your car windshield. So a good example, actually, somebody mentioned the solar project, the smaller solar project in Scotts Bluff was hit by softball-sized hail. Those panels don't break, they do what your car windshield would do in, in a hailstorm, right? They spiderweb, but they, they stay together. Those panels, after the hail event, continued to produce electricity. They didn't produce electricity as well as before the hail event, but they actually still worked. The owner of that facility then made an insurance claim, and within about six months, that facility was repaired. So that, that's how that would, would shake out in, in the event of a, of a natural disaster, a tornado, a hailstorm, something like, like that. So I wanted to address that. Decommissioning. Commissioner, you had some questions about why, why fifteen years? And I think the, the staff answered it, but essentially, the, the net decommissioning cost until that time is, is positive, so there's not a reason to provide that financial assurance. If they disappeared and the county had to do the decommissioning, they would end up in the positive, because they would salvage the, the asset, and, and they would be positive financially. There were questions about subsidies and, and taxes, and a couple of things on that. One, there was some mixing of local taxes, property taxes, right, which as you heard about in the opening presentation, the developer pays. Nebraska state law says specifically that the assessor is to ignore the presence of the solar facility when valuing the underlying land. So that, that doesn't affect the farmer. They continue, or the landowner continues to pay their taxes on their property as if the solar farm weren't there, so their value doesn't jump up, their tax bill doesn't jump up. They pay the taxes on the facility itself. The, the federal subsidy, as Matt said, lots of industries get subsidies. Farming, energy production, all kinds of industries get subsidies. What happens in this particular industry, though, is that the off-taker of the energy knows exactly what they're gonna get for a subsidy. And so the off-taker pays them less, pays them the amount of the- And so, the off-taker pays them less, pays them the amount of the, that they would pay them, less the amount of the subsidy. So, the subsidy doesn't go in Next Era's pocket. The subsidy actually goes in our pockets as consumers, because it makes the electricity cheaper to the buyer. So, if NPPD buys this electricity, that electricity is going to be the amount of the subsidy cheaper than it otherwise would have been without the subsidy. NPPD is a political subdivision, they're a nonprofit entity. They're supposed to then pass that savings through to their customers. As we talked about before, they or their customers, Norris, or whomever, LES is the same way, is then selling the electricity at retail. So, it's the buyer of the electricity at the end of the process who benefits from that subsidy money. It helps Next Era and companies like them, because it makes their product cheaper and easier to market, but the actual dollar ends up in the pocket of the consumer. The, what else? Property values was discussed. I think one of the opponents mentioned that the study she had found showed a property value decrease between 1 and 1/2 and 3%. So, you know, we all know in buying and selling homes, 1 and 1/2 and 3%, that's a pretty small amount, and really, at that level, it's in the eye of the beholder. Somebody might want to live next to a solar farm, because they want to live out in the country. People can laugh, but they want to live out in the country. They might not want to live out there where people are harvesting and using fertilizer and doing all those kind of things. Solar farm, as somebody said, is a pretty quiet neighbor, right? It's a matter of choice. There was a study done by a firm called Cone Resnick, a big national consulting firm based in Chicago, that was part of the application for the Waverly solar project. And that study looked specifically at Lancaster County, and they found no statistically measurable impact on either property values from that project, or time on market, how long it took to sell homes. And they go and they review data of sales, and they reviewed projects all over the Midwest, where solar farms had been there for many years, and looked at the sales data, and that was their conclusion. So, I apologize that we didn't provide that study again here, but I wanted to make sure that you were aware that that was there. What else? The screening, the trees and so forth are outside of the fence, so they screen the fence as well. You do the screening, then the fence, then the solar panels. So, somebody mentioned not wanting to look at the fence either. The fence is behind the screening. Glare came up. Solar panels are meant to absorb light, right? That's how they generate the electricity. There is some reflection, some glare, but it's a matte-finished glass. It's not a shiny glass, like, you know, in a window in a house or something like that, that reflects the sun. So, the idea of the solar panels is actually not to reflect the sun. There is a glare study in the application, and it found no impacts from glare from this particular project. Noise was mentioned from the inverters. We have done, Next Era's hired a consultant who's done a preliminary noise analysis, sound analysis. They did it very conservatively. They actually included things like monolith and the power plant there as well. Somebody brought up the cumulative noise. They actually looked at that. And that study concludes, and when that study is final, we'll provide that to the county, of course, per the conditions of approval, but it concluded that the project meets the county's regulations as to sound. Somebody brought up fires, and also, try not to mix these points too much, but somebody brought up concentrated solar and birds getting burned. This is not concentrated solar. In fact, I believe your regulations prohibit concentrated solar. People don't build concentrated solar anymore. So, that concern addresses something that's simply not present here. Solar panels, solar farms really don't, as you heard, the Lincoln Fire Department, their word is much better than mine on this, they determined that there's not a particular fire hazard here. These batteries in an installation like this are different than car batteries. You can go online and see a Tesla burning, right? Those batteries, they, both kinds of batteries have lithium in them. The ones in cars and those kind of applications have nickel, and that's what really is combustible, is the thing that can cause those fires. These batteries, because they don't have to move around, can be a lot heavier, right? When you're doing an electric car, you want the lightest batteries you can. These batteries have iron instead of nickel. They're very heavy, but they are very fire resistant. The early fires with battery installations, they actually, governments were making them put sprinklers in the container, and those would leak, and you'd have water and electricity, and that's not good. There are regulations now, requirements for these batteries for the manufacturers, where if a cell were to catch fire, it has to not catch the additional, the adjacent cell. If a battery catches fire, it has to not be able to catch the adjacent battery. If a container catches fire, it has to not be able to affect the adjacent container. So, something could happen, but highly likely it's contained to one particular container, and these batteries simply are not the same kind of batteries that you might go online and, you know, Google Tesla battery fire and see. That's a different type of battery that's used in a mobile application versus this stationary application. I think that's what I have for the moment, other than maybe a closing point, and of course, responding to your questions, Matt. I know you had some things you wanted to respond to as well.
David, you covered a lot of it. I just wanted to mention the natural disasters. I think that's something that we have always top of mind as we operate, you know, regulated utility in Florida. What we've got, as you all probably watch on the news, see us getting hit with hurricanes regularly, right? And with that, tornadoes, I know a lot of my coworkers actually got hit on one of the last tornado, or the hurricanes that came through with tornadoes. People lost their homes in our area. And I think it's worth mentioning, too, that, you know, Florida Power and Light, that's our regulated utility in Florida, and they've got 3,500 megawatts roughly installed operational solar. And so, we're obviously in a very difficult environment to operate solar and storage, and so, we've got a lot of experience. That all started in 2011 for solar, and then 2013 was our first storage project. So, this isn't, you know, new for us. We're aware that natural disasters happen, we're prepared for it, and the communities that we work in are always top of mind, whether it's at FPL territory or out, you know, in nearest territory throughout the country. If there's an issue, we're on top of it. And with that, the emergency action plan always comes up, and I have found that to be a really interesting kind of component to how we develop projects, you know, as we go in, and I've participated in this. But emergency action plans, they outline really anything that could happen on a project when it's operating. So, anywhere from someone having a heart attack to, you know, tripping over something or whatever, and every possible scenario is planned for, all the contact numbers for the local fire departments, you know, plans for, you know, whatever could occur on that site is accounted for. And so, the fact that, you know, prior to construction, we'll have that in place, we make contact, we do first responder training, we met with some folks last night from the Howland Fire Department at our open house, and we're able to share information and exchange it. And I think that's something we want to continue to do, as we move through the process of getting, you know, permit and working towards starting construction in the future.
And I'll just say, in case you didn't make all the way to the end, the emergency action plan is item L in our application. It's the, I think, the third item from the end. It's got 20 items in the table of contents, it's 35 pages long. So, it's a real document. It's not a, you know, something we threw together. It covers emergency response management, evacuation procedures, fires, conditions associated with energy storage systems, response to a fire incident, medical emergency, security incident, natural disaster. So, it's very comprehensive. And of course, we hope we never have to use any of it, but...
Yeah.
It was also mentioned a couple of times cadmium. Is there cadmium?
No.
Okay. And water use?
I didn't hear your answer.
No, there is not. There was an older solar panel, so some of the things people might have been finding online referred to cad, that referred to cadmium, were referring to older solar panels that are not installed anymore in these type of projects.
Thanks.
And also, water usage, other than during construction?
There's, yeah, there wouldn't be a well associated with the project, so very little water use. You clean the panels once or twice a year, maybe, and that's about it.
Why did you not contact the citizens living out in that area much earlier, rather than last night?
Yeah, we've been in touch. I mean, I think we've been on the ground now for a long time. I mentioned just that we had worked on land agreements in 2019, and I think as you go through the process of, you know, filing interconnections and working through, you know, the development process, signing land, I think that there's, you know, a cadence, obviously, to that stuff happening, and I think we're very open to sharing information and want to do that. I had some conversations with some people as I took the break earlier, and, you know, we were very open, and we want to share information and want to participate. And so, I think that that's been, you know, something that we'll look forward to leaning into, you know, over the next, you know, several weeks to months as we, you know, move forward through the process.
If we were to defer this for two weeks, would you be willing to reach out and have more meetings with these folks to answer some of their concerns and questions?
Of course.
Yeah, and I also mentioned, too, I put my phone number and my contact information up there, and I, some of the people in this room I've spoken with already, and I'm open to having conversations with anybody that wants to reach out about any topic and make, you know, our team available to anybody that has questions, and, you know, we see that as an important part of the process.
So, how would you advertise that you were having another meeting? So many people here didn't know about last night's meeting, or it just seems like the communication is lacking.
Yeah, we, I mean, it was really a word-of-mouth thing, so we talked to some people that we...
Landowners' meeting.
Yeah, a lot of landowners, a lot of people that we've been in touch with. We've been around Lancaster County for a while, and I think it's just, we have conversations, we have people that express interest in getting together and talking about the project and learning more, and so, I guess, to me, it was step one. And so, we, you know, are open to doing more engagement.
Okay. Can we not?
Yeah, we need to, you guys, it gets, we can't, we can't continue to have conversations like this, because we can't hear it, it doesn't get recorded.
Thank you. One thing we could do is, I think George said, they sent out, the planning department sent out 228 letters. We can get that list from them. And, yeah, I mean, you know, I...
No, go ahead.
I assume that this will be appealed to the county board. I think that's probably a safe assumption, so there is more to this process to go as well. But if you'd like us to have a meeting in the next two weeks, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I have some questions, too. So, before we get to that point, let's keep that, go ahead.
Can you address a little bit more about the migration, birds, and those types of things?
Yeah. So, any project like this, the developer consults with wildlife agencies, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Nebraska Game and Parks Commission. You do surveys for raptors and birds and species of various kinds. Solar farms and birds coexist and wildlife coexist quite well. I'm not familiar with, and I've been in meetings with the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission, where they have said that they're comfortable with solar farms and birds, and birds know the difference between a solar panel and a lake. And one thing about that, that I think is also just an important point, touches on the runoff and the erosion and all of that, the solar panels are not butted up to one another. The rows, right, the rows are cohesive, but in between each row, there's about enough room to drive a pickup truck. And so, when it rains, that water's going to run off the solar panels, sure, but there's plenty of open ground for that water to go into. That ground is also open for wildlife of all different kinds. You also, if we had the, well, actually, I don't know how we get the computer back up, but if you see the map of the project, it has various, okay, here, you can't see what I'm pointing to, but you kind of, you see the areas where there aren't...
You can zoom, and then you can point. We can see that if you point then.
You can see.
Your little, with the computer.
You can see the kind of diagonal lines and the various, those are all waterways and wetlands and riparian corridors and things like that where there won't be solar panels. That's where animals typically like to go and traverse. So, those actually provide and maintain those existing kind of natural pathways for various types of wildlife that use this area.
While we're talking about that and the grasses and whatever, and looking at the screening, somebody had mentioned red cedar as an invasive species. I don't see red cedar on here. I see firs and other trees. I was just checking.
Yeah, I don't think they would plant red cedar, and they consult with landscape architects and professional biologists and people who, you know, know what to plant, what will do well in this area, what will grow and what will thrive and those kind of things.
Elm, spruce, dago's fur. Okay. I just wanted to double-check, because that was something that people had brought up, the birds.
A bit of a random segue, sorry to interrupt. Somebody brought up that in the application, there's a fence, a chain-link fence with barbed wire. That's around the substation. It says that clearly on the plan in the application. It shows that fence, and then it does show the game fence or the wildlife fence for, around the solar panel pods. So, I just, I did want to clarify that while it popped into my mind.
Yeah, no problem.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I interrupted you.
That's okay. That's fine. We have a lot of, there's been a lot of things come up today. Two other things that were on questions people brought up, one, people talked about impact on cell phones, and the other one was people asked, has the company had experience, what is the oldest solar farm that your company has worked with? Because that was one of the other questions people had asked about, so...
I'm not familiar with any impact on cell phones for solar projects. David might...
I mean, I've permitted solar projects around the Midwest, and I've never heard about impacts on cell phones.
And then, as far as our experience goes, we built our first solar project in 2011, and then, our first storage project in 2013, and we've got roughly 11,000 megawatts operating as far as solar across the country, both in Florida and then across the country. And then, we have roughly 3,500 megawatts of storage in operation and a lot more in development. We've mentioned a project up in Pierce County, we're building 170-megawatt battery up there right now, and 420 megawatts of solar in a pair with that.
Do you know what the oldest solar farm is in the United States?
The country?
I know in other countries, I mean, that's different. I don't want, their regulations are so different in other parts of the world, so, in the United States, do you know? United States, Canada?
I'd be guessing.
I mean, the technology's not...
Yeah.
Yeah, it changes rapidly.
Yeah. Utility-scale solar, I can say this, utility-scale solar really started to at least show up in Nebraska in my work 10 years ago, something like that. It was talked about the five, 10 years prior to that, it just, it was expensive, basically, and the market works and the price comes down as the industry grows, and now it's economically viable. But, yeah, I don't know nationally. I would guess there was a solar farm in Arizona or somewhere like that 20, 30 years ago, but I don't know.
Okay. Thanks.
Are the panels made in China?
So, I mentioned the materials, let me pull my notes back up for that, but I, we, I was researching this as well, just to confirm some of what's in there, but there's 76% glass, 10% plastic polymer, 5% silicone, 8% is an aluminum frame, and then roughly 1% is copper, and less than 0.1% is silver and other metals. And I think to answer your question, there is a purity of silicone, and some of these materials, just like cell phones, right, a lot of your cell phones are made in China or in Southeast Asia, and a lot of the materials are available there, there, there's a purity component, there's mines that are there. So, a lot of the raw materials come out of China and some other countries, Korea, and then, in a lot of cases, some of those materials are then assembled in other places and then sent to the U.S. So, just like anything else that, you know, we have from an electronic standpoint, I would say that, you know, solar panels are similar as far as the process of procurement, where they come from.
I was just wondering about possible tariffs coming in and raising the price 25% or so.
Yeah, I think it's always something that we were managing as an organization. Like I mentioned, we've got a scale component... I mentioned, we've got a scale component to our business that allows us to be, you know, proactive and get ahead of maybe some of those things that other developers might not be able to. And it's something that I know there's a lot of people in our organization that are managing that and, but I can't, I don't have any specifics on, you know, our outlook. I don't think we're concerned at this point.
All right, are there additional? Yeah.
It's probably in all the documents, so I apologize, but how, can you explain the structure that the solar panels go on? What is put into the ground? Like, is there cement down, like, how deep does it go? What are those in the ground?
There are steel piles that are driven into the ground, there's not a concrete foundation. The depth that they're driven in depends on the wind loads in the area, so, a few feet, but I can't give you an exact number that, right, the engineers will figure that out, two, three, four feet, something like that. And those are driven in, then there's a racking system attached to those and the solar panels are attached to the racking system. The racks, let me get my directions right, the solar panels run, the rows run north and south, and so, in the morning, they face east, they basically follow the sun, they face west at night, and then they go back.
No foundations at all on the project? Yep, except for the inverters.
Inverters, but not the solar panels.
Okay. And then, my other question is, through your experience, and maybe you don't know the answer to this, but, so, a solar panel gets damaged, right? It's potentially leaking or whatever it might happen. How soon do you think one of your workers would even know that and be able to respond? How much time might it take?
We, that's a good question, and we monitor our projects 24 hours a day, you know, whether it's a natural gas plant or a nuclear plant, we've got a facility in Florida that monitors everything 24 hours a day, so there's sensors on everything when something's not working. I mean, you know immediately, and the expectation is that when you have a power purchase agreement, that you're sending the energy to the grid that you say you're going to, and if you don't, then someone's obviously going to be upset about that. So, for us, it's in our best interest always to make sure that our projects are in good working condition. We've got people in the community that are operating them, and then we're monitoring 24 hours a day for anything that could happen. And I think, just one thing to mention about like a solar panel leaking, it's just, it's a plastic, it's on the inside plastic, you've kind of got these layers, you've got backing, you've got a frame, there's not anything to leak. I think that's, I would say, a misconception, there's, you know, these panels are there to last for 30 years, and it's very, like, well-made, it can handle a lot of extreme environments and conditions. We have them all over the country and, yeah, they're not leaking even if they're damaged. And David mentioned this too, it's, and a reference that I always use, but the idea of like a windshield on a car, you know, you never really, you're not letting water into that panel, otherwise it's compromised. So, there's incentive, obviously, by the manufacturer not to let that happen.
That brings up one other point too, back to the natural disaster point, which is the reason you invest the $600 million is not to have the solar farm, but to generate the electricity, the commodity that you can sell. If the solar farm's not working because there was a hailstorm, you're not selling as much electricity as you could have. So, the owner of the facility is very motivated to get that back online as quickly as possible in the event of either a natural disaster or equipment failure or whatever it might be.
All right, do we have additional questions? I know you said you had some closing comments, but I want to make sure if anybody has any questions, we don't have any hanging out there. And I will give you back the floor, I just, I think, thank you for answering questions and providing more information. I do think the issue of communication has really made this difficult for a lot of people. So, I needed to say that while you were both standing here.
Thank you, we appreciate that. You know, the only thing I would say in closing, and I, again, I want to acknowledge your point, all of your point about the communication, and we will follow up as we've promised. You know, somebody talked about the community, though, and, you know, everybody has property rights, including the people who voluntarily want to put their land into this project, including this company that is spending millions of dollars just to put this application together and wants to invest hundreds of millions of dollars in Lancaster County and pay property taxes, right? All land use regulation is a balance. But, it also, a zoning regulation is the rules of the road. As you heard from the staff at the outset, this application goes beyond meeting the requirements in the zoning regulations. And that really, other than conditions of approval, with all respect, as somebody who also sits on a planning commission in Douglas County, that's the beginning and the end of the question. It's not a question about is solar good, are the regulations good? Those are the rules that we came to, and we've proposed a project that meets all of those rules. And certainly, it's within your purview and your discretion to impose conditions of approval that you feel are necessary for this particular site and this particular project. But, beyond that, unless the application is somehow deficient, there's not a basis to deny the application. The application and the project should be approved. Again, I say that with all respect, but I think it's important to set out for all of us, you know, kind of what a planning commission's job is, and there's a reason that we have zoning regulations, because those are the rules of the road, we've followed those rules, and so, we, I respectfully ask for your approval of this application. It sounds like that might not happen for two more weeks. But I just, I think that's an important point to make, this gets emotional, I understand it impacts people's lives and their homes and they don't like it and they don't want to look at it. You know, again, people have property rights, there are laws in place, and the applicant has met all of those rules, as we heard from planning staff. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yose?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move that we defer this project for two, to our next meeting in two weeks on the 18th of December. My reasoning behind it is, I want them to have as much communication with the community in that area as possible over the next two weeks. What he has said about zoning, that is our job, is to look at the zoning regulations and not the political elements of the decision. But I do want the community in that area to get as much information as they can, whether they agree with the information or not, that's up to them. But I want them to have the opportunity to get the information that I don't think has been provided to that community yet.
And I would like to see the documents that were submitted handed over the counter and the one that you referred to also that was...
The property value study?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, you're very correct, our responsibility here is not to empathize or politicize, it's to follow the codes and the regulations that are given to us. But I still would feel more comfortable with better communication with the people and the ability to ask questions. And I'm sure our chair will explain that now that we've closed public hearing, we will not have public hearing again, but letters can continue to come in.
Yeah, the public hearing is closed, so there will be no additional testimony at the next, if the motion to defer is approved, there would not be any additional testimony. And then, if that motion is approved, any other additional information can be taken into consideration and provided to the planning commission in order to make a decision. And then, once that decision is made, based on the land use regulations that were put into place by Lancaster County, then either party can then appeal that to the county board, which then takes place in the future after a decision by the planning commission. That is all accurate. All right, yes, for the discussion.
Open for discussion, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. This was a tough one for me on a number of fronts. One I want to address, yes, as planning commissioners, we do have to follow regulation and make decisions off of that, but equally, every project is different. And there is an opportunity for either conditions or amendments that we can, you know, present. And so, I want to make sure we, you know, leverage the tools that we can to address some of the concerns of our citizens, right? And what we feel may align to what, you know, our department, planning department does, and they do a wonderful job, right? But, this world is dynamic like everything else. Want to appreciate the applicant for, you know, providing the information and it's very thorough, there's plenty of documents for us to read and keep us busy. But, like the fellow commissioners, I mean, the surface area of this project is significant, right? We're talking about 2,000-plus acres and affecting many people. And to just have the planning department send out a communication, I think is a bad situation, right? You have to communicate. Personally, I try to communicate often, over-communicate, right? Especially with projects like this, because of the impact of it. And I think, knowing that you've worked on this for years, just bring people along with that progress, and I think you'll have a different outcome by doing that. And then, lastly, you know, I do think it's important from a community perspective, regardless of the type of power that we generate, we're a growing city, and we have to think of just different ways to energize a city. Even if it's outside of renewables, there's resiliency, right? I mean, how do you think of resilient systems and its variety of power generation? I was in utilities for years and it's hard, so we have to think of different ways to fuel what we do, you know, as citizens. And so, I do appreciate the different project that was brought here and trying to figure out a way to accommodate that, you know, within the city. But I do agree with the deferment that our commissioner has presented.
Additional discussion?
I also concur with my fellow commissioners, and I do believe it's our job to listen. That's what we're up here to be and give guidance to the county board. And it's very important that all of the items that we've talked about, the applicant giving us the information to answer your questions, will give us the opportunity as recommendations to our county board if there's other conditions we need to do in this situation. So, I appreciate the applicant, our planning staff, and all of you that's taken the time to send us letters, taking the time here today, and we'll continue to work very hard on this item.
I guess I'll echo that too, just it does take a lot of bravery to come and time and energy, so thank you, all of you and to the community, and I agree, we were really great listeners and we, I promise you were heard, and we will discuss in two weeks at our next meeting.
Also, for those of you who have not been a part of a planning commission process in the past, the planning commission does serve in a different role in which we are not allowed to discuss this project or any project outside of what we discuss in these meetings. We get information, we can read it, we can communicate with planning staff, but we won't be having like a meeting to come up with a plan, that is not how this works, it is different than other elected bodies because we are not an elected legislative body, we're quasi-legislative, quasi-judicial. So, just want to let people know how that information that comes in will be received but won't be discussed until we are back here. And again, I would echo fellow commissioners, this was a significant amount of time out of everyone's day, and I understand there were people who couldn't be here because of that, but we do appreciate people making the effort to be here. All right, Kelly.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yose?
Yes.
This item will be deferred till December 18th, planning commission hearing.
At this time, if there is anyone who wishes to speak on an item that was not on today's agenda, you may do so.
Seeing none and seeing everybody leave, I would move, I would move for adjournment.
Joy. All right, Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yose?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.